Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the July 11, 2016 Town Council Meeting. We will start as always with a Pledge of Allegiance at moment of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to notify of the United States of America, and to remind you of what is expected, when they're issued under God, in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two on the agenda is public comment, but there's been a suggestion based on the number of people that are signed up already. We usually have five minutes to speak. Is there any discussion anybody wants to have about shortening that so that we could get to some later items? Throwing it out there, any thoughts on maybe a limitation to three minutes so that everybody can get heard and we can count over business? Yes, Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to keep it to five minutes as it's posted on the agenda.
Anybody else? Entertaining the Secretary's suggestion. All right. Well, then we'll keep it at five minutes and we'll try to get to everything that we can. Mr. Bass? Excuse me, Mr. Bass, Mr. Mayor? We have a list that has to be...
Yes, yes, we do have a list. Susan Johnson, please.
Thank you, Town Council, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to make a few comments about whether or not the Children's Center should stay on the health insurance plan for the town. First and foremost, let me say that I understand the mayor's concerns. And in the past two weeks, the Children's Center has spoken with a number of experts in the insurance field because we were concerned, are there risks? For instance, we spoke to Lori Craig, who is the town's representative from Cigna on this plan, on the town's self-insured insurance plan. I quote what Lori said to me. It's not a problem to have non-employees on the town's self-insured plan. The town defines eligibility, not Cigna, not Cigna's documents. Okay. She also said that there is a negligible premium inflation risk if there were a catastrophic illness, if one of the town, the Children's Center employees got seriously sick. She laughed. She said, Susan, you have 11 people out of 800. You are insignificant. That didn't make me feel good. I don't like to be insignificant, but in this case, it's probably right. She also said that the funding rate is set based on all 800 in the plan and that when they set the funding rate, the top expenses are thrown out. They considered them an aberration and not worthy of consideration. And finally, she said, the risk of a really large claim hurting the town coming through the Children's Center is negligible because the town has done a really good job of managing that risk. It has a stop-loss policy in place per person and per the overall plan that caps the town's expenses. So that was Cigna and my conversation with Cigna. Terry is here today. Terry, where are you? Terry, from Siegel. Terry is the insurance broker for the town who worked on this insurance plan for the town. In speaking with Terry, and I will quote you, Terry, you said, "Many towns have non-employees on their self-insured plans. It is a common and acceptable practice." She said, too, that the risk of a large claim hurting the town is again negligible because we're such a small percentage of the insured pool. And finally, she said, "That stop-loss policy protects the town." And though she could not recall any actual stop-loss events where it might have been triggered, she said, "If they, if one occurred, it would be excluded when calculating the rate for the next year because it was one of the top ones and would be thrown out." We also spoke with an auditor for Travelers Insurance who works on KIRMA. KIRMA was raised at the last session saying, "We're worried about the town's KIRMA risk." KIRMA stands for the Connecticut Inter, where did I put it down? Linda, do you remember? Inter's Insurance Policy Management Agency. It deals specifically with workers' comp and liability. Now, the person we spoke to did the KIRMA audits for Bethel and for Ridgefield. This is her field. And she said, "There's no risk to the town for KIRMA at all. You have your own liability policy. You're not employees of the town. It's an arm's length relationship. There's no KIRMA risk." So needless to say, we're a little confused. We're getting the message from one side that says there's huge risk and we're getting another that says there's no what? Okay, then I'll take my other spot, too? Or not?
Actually, I think it's about 3:50, so you have another minute.
Okay. So little history, the Children's Center was approached by the town to be offering low-income families affordable childcare back in the 1970s. We didn't ask for this. We were asked to do this. And in doing so, the town said, "We will support you. We know it's expensive." But on top of that, the Children's Center then researched and found a huge grant that would actually supply the sliding fee scale funding for the town. Right now, that grant is $325,000 a year. And for 45 years, millions of dollars have come into this town to support the low-income families having childcare so they could work and pay taxes. One of the requirements of that grant, and every year, we maintain the eligibility for both the town and for the school to keep that grant money flowing into us. And one of the criteria is, we have to have and offer health insurance to our employees. And for years, we did, up until 1990, the school had its own health insurance plan. But then it became just cumbersomely, we couldn't afford it. I don't want to be thrown back into that position with the new plans that might be presented tonight. They're not going to solve the problem for this grant coming into the school. So when I think about the insurance, I really want to think bigger than that. I want to think about the relationship between the town and the school. Forty-five years of success, forty-five years doing what? Together, we have prepared over 3,500 students to be ready to succeed. It's up? Okay, I'm going to quote one last thing from the plan. May I quote the last quote from the action plan from 1970? Tom says yes?
Just, yeah, read...
"A guide to tomorrow" was written in 1970 from the town. It said, and its words are relevant today, "The key here is the ordinary citizen. The people of the town prepared this plan, and it takes into account the particular needs and resources of their own community. The action plan is the product of the people themselves. If this action plan is to be more than another report gathering dust on the shelf, it will be because of you, our citizens, that you are willing to devote as much time and attention to the needs of others and the problems which indirectly affect the town as a whole. The town's Community Development Action Plan began with concerned citizens, and concerned citizens are needed today to assure that the recommendations are thoughtfully considered and implemented with courage and determination. I ask the Town Council to have the courage and determination to put this action on hold until a comprehensive review is conducted and a decision can be reached that weighs all essential factors." Thank you.
Next person.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, if my board are checked, this is a public hearing for the town in New Milford. There are people on the list from Roxbury, San Diego, Lakeville. I ask comments from the Town Attorney, if this upper protocol is...
Quickly, I'm looking at our laws of procedure, and we adopted a, we adopted back in December, and looking at those quickly. I'm just looking super quick at the public participation provision.
While I was looking, is there any other guidance, limitations to Town residents, the council members and above?
Nope.
Okay. I have the answer. It's rule number six is basically the order of the meeting includes an opportunity for members of the public to address the Town Council, and each speaker given five minutes, so there's no restriction on them being a lecturer or resident of the town.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks for the...
Charles Flamen. For the record, I live in Roxbury, but I also happen to be the chairman of the Board of the Children's Center. So I thought that got me a toe in the door here. And I didn't want the job, but I'm here. And, you know, it turned out to be a very nice organization. Anyway, let me give you a little background. I don't want to rehash too much of what you said, but the town approached the Children's Center. They were a private organization doing what daycare facilities do. The town thought, in their wisdom, that having a facility that would be low-income, affordable income for people who could not afford daycare, that we'd offer that service. We signed on, you signed on, and we were off. For the next 20 years or so, the center, there was contributions from the town, but the center largely existed on the fees from paying full-fee people and from grants. And they've been very imaginative in getting grants, let me tell you. And over the years, I had a rough guess, I'm saying, we probably got at least $8.8 million in grants brought into the town. You never saw it. It's all filtered in through care for these kids and all that. You do the math. We're getting $350,000 or so a year now. Back in the 70s, it was $160. Do the numbers, and 8.8 is probably a modest number. Anyway, by 1990, the cost of insurance had gotten so prohibitive that it was on the verge of breaking the institution. And at that point, the Board of Selectment, I guess it was at the time, you weren't called Town Council at that time, in their wisdom, they thought it was time to step up and help out, and they did. And we entered into an understanding with the town that we would do our part and keep the Affordable Care Program afloat, and you would help out by giving help on the medical insurance by allowing our people to sign on. We do not get this for free. The town contributes, but we pay 70% of the fee. We're paying $170,000 a year right now for 11 people. It's not everybody on the staff, it's just those 11. And if you do the math and that again, I mean, we're looking at, we've contributed about $800,000 to the town, to the general kitty. And I don't know what the numbers are as far as what we've taken out, but I suspect we're either breaking even or you're making a profit on it. We still haven't seen the numbers there. That's why we're going to need some time. That's why I say, that's what Susan was saying, give us two months or so, or three months, whatever, to hash it out, find out what the real numbers are. And let's see. And to qualify for those grants, it isn't simply to send in a request. The requirements are stringent. They require high degrees of education for the staff. We don't pay a hell of a lot of money. The high pay is $17.50 an hour. I mean, where do you get a master's degree person to do that? One of the reasons they do it is because we have a quality medical insurance program that augments their salary. And it's not for everybody in the staff, it's just for those 11 or 12 people, wherever it is. We are a full-time daycare facility. We're not two hours a day, we're there all day. And it is a sliding scale. Some of these people pay eight bucks a week. I mean, for those of you who are looking for daycare, I mean, it's a lot more than that. And so, and we do it because we're a nonprofit organization. We are cutting a budget that is so tight, so thin, you know, you talk about a few thousand dollars a month or extra. That's the kind of stuff that breaks an organization like this. So, and our big funding, I mean, we go out, we get money in grants, but we're always out there begging for money, as you probably know. We're always trying, having fundraisers, and fortunately, there's a lot of people who step up and just outright give us money, thank heavens, because we could never do the things that we're doing. And for those of you who have not seen the center, I invite you to come up, take a look around. It's a quality place. Anyway, the realities are, we provide an essential service for the low-income folks in this town, and they are out there. We bring in a lot of money into the town, it just disappears, doesn't go into the general fund, but it comes in a form of services that we provide. And we pay a substantial part of our medical insurance. It's not a free ride, but now we find there's an attempt to change the rules of the agreement that this, your predecessors, the legacy of this organization, you said, you've made an agreement with us. You asked us to do it, we did it. By 1990, we were in trouble financially. You stepped up and you helped us out, and that's helped us keep afloat over these years. And to me...
Just a five-minute mark.
The wisdom of predecessors is still in place. An agreement is an agreement. You shook hands, we kept our part of the bargain.
Diane Galick.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council.
Good evening. My name is Diane Galick, and I have been a preschool teacher with the Children's Center for 30 years. That's a long time. The Children's Center has served the New Milford community for over 45 years. The dedicated staff of the Children's Center strive to provide a safe, nurturing, and educationally sound environment for the children, three months to eight years of age, and many of the children are here. Parents, many who must work, have peace of mind that their child is being well-cared-for in their absence. The reality is that the Children's Center has its costs to run as it does. How sad it would be no longer to allow us to be part of the town insurance. The effect will be felt not only by the staff, but by the families who depend on us and are already feeling the strains of the economy. I'm sure the council members who have children or our grandparents feel, as we do at the center, having a great place to raise our families when families, when families are working parents, single moms, single dads, have a place, that safe nurturing environment to lead their children. As a staff member of the Children's Center, I am asking you, that the council members, please reconsider that the Children's Center health insurance not be canceled so that the Children's Center can continue to serve the community and future children for years to come. Thank you very much.
Susan Campbell.
Good evening, all. This isn't as easy as it looks. I live here in New Milford as well, in Sunny Valley. My name is Susan Campbell. I live at 38 Sunny Valley Road here in New Milford. To say the Children's Center means something to me is an understatement. I know it very intimately. I've known thousands of children and families. Each and every one of them served the highest quality early childhood education experience that set the foundation for their future endeavors and their very lives. Children of past mayors have come through our doors, state representatives, town officials, town directors, town attorneys, police officers, public school teachers, children of all types of town hall personnel have come through our doors, and we continue to serve our town employees because we are part of this town. We are a golden thread woven into the tapestry of this town, and we matter. But it doesn't stop there. It doesn't even start there. For the past 45 years, the Children's Center has served another population, the low-to-moderate income family, the working poor. Without the center, these families would not be able to afford a high-quality, early childhood education experience for their children. We've all been very fortunate. We've always had a town that supports what we do, that believes in our mission statement. The Children's Center of New Milford is dedicated to providing quality, developmentally appropriate early care and education to the children of our community regardless of background or ability to pay. Yes, the children look upon the Children's Center, that Tudor-style building up the hill from the green, and they call it the castle. I've dwelled within its walls for these many, many years and think of it as nothing less than one of the jewels in the crown of this town. The Children's Center needs you now, more than ever. Our hard-working, dedicated, highly-educated staff work for meager wages, and yet they possess college degrees and years of experience. The health care benefit through the town has been a consistent, reliable, and highly-valued benefit for the past 26 years, no doubt because our partnership has been long and the reciprocity has been strong. Our health care benefit through the town has also literally been a lifesaver because for me, it was. 10 years ago, I had a less than 20% chance of surviving a life-threatening illness, but I was lucky. I had good insurance, and I was able to return to good health. This Thursday, I have the honor and the privilege of celebrating my 30th year with the Children's Center of New Milford.
Lynda Gomez.
I really have to follow that. You can tell she writes our annual letter. Can you tell the way she writes? I am Lynda Gomez, and I live in Lakeville. I am the comptroller at the Children's Center. I've seen, every year I come up here with Susan, January time, and talk to all of you about our wonderful Children's Center. I've been there almost 20 years, actually, come November, and we've all, there's a lot of us that have a lot of age at the Children's Center. I won't talk long. I just want to, Susan asked me to come up and say a few things, and the biggest thing, I'm being there as long as I have, things have changed a lot in the Children's Center. The state funding has changed a lot. You would have saw me every single week because years ago, when I first started the Children's Center, the mayor had to sign the checks. Not only, you know, one of our directors, but also a mayor. And the bank, the money only could go into Connecticut National Bank account. It couldn't go into any other account. So state has changed a lot of paperwork and everything else. They got you off the hook. You no longer have to come down here. We send you the reports, but you don't have to sign the checks anymore. Now we do a single audit. We always had an audit, but now we have the single audit, which you here have in the town, so we no longer have to come down and visit as much. You can still come visit us, though. We'd be glad to have you. But the reason I started at the Children's Center as the comptroller is I was a parent. I was a single parent. I came, moved back here to New Milford after my divorce, stayed with my dad and stuff, and met this wonderful person, Sue Campbell. Someone said, "Call the county," because I had to go back to work full-time. I was a stay-at-home mom. So I went back to work, my children went to the Children's Center. It was the best experience I ever had. So about five years later, Suzie calls me and says, "We have a problem. We lost, we lost our bookkeeper. We have no one to do our state reports." And back then, like I said, we're quite expensive. She says, "Can you help me?" I was there the next day. I couldn't help. How can you not help them? They've done so much for me. They put me back on my feet. My daughters are now, one lives in Colorado, counting, does the same thing, loves it. I have another one going back to school to be a teacher, same thing. I mean, they've succeeded so far, and their start was here. So, and I credit these teachers, they were phenomenal. They treat them like their own. But, so I won't take much of your time, but if anybody has any questions on financials or anything else, I'm the person to call. So I'll talk to y'all soon. Thank you.
John Deanna.
I want to thank the council and the mayor for letting me speak. I'll be brief.
Name of the attorney.
My name is John Deanna, 44 Husetonic Avenue, New Milford. The Children's Center is not just a daycare, it's a school with a curriculum. Some of the things they do in the school, such as lessons at Studio D, which is in New Milford, pottery classes at the VCA, they do Spanish lessons, they get yoga classes, music through movement, class, classes in literacy and lyric, literacy and lyrics, and just a few examples. Other things that the Children's Center does for the community provides, in my opinion, an integral part of the fabric of this community. They have a program called BASH. Children collect money for the Christmas tree lights, the replacement. They go through, they do Christmas carols at all the local places, Town Hall here, the Senior Center, the library, the post office. It's an important thing that these people do. And on a personal note, we had a family emergency. I needed someplace to bring my son, without any question. They took him. We lost a family member that day. They sent me home with a meal for my son, so that way we could be looked after. That's the kind of people that these people are. They're not just, it's not just a... I'm getting a little worked up here. They're not employees, they're friends, they're teachers, they're valued members of this community. I really urge the council to really, really think about what the actions and the impact it has, not just on the people, but all the people that bring their children there, and you get the idea what I'm trying to say. Thank you very much.
Mary Burnham.
Some of you will recognize me. My name is Mary Burnham. I live at 24 Walnut Tree Hill Road, Sandy Hook. I was the past director of the Children's Center. I see a few familiar faces. It's been a while. I wanted to give you a little history because I came to the center in 1991, February 4th to be exact. My first board meeting with the Board of Directors, Susan's mother was the first director, and she was there with me. I was shocked because the chairman, or chairwoman, I don't actually remember, of both the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town Committee sat on the Board of Directors of the Children's Center. The reason I was surprised is because politics wasn't involved. They were concerned about the people of New Milford, the families of New Milford. And one of the things they wanted to make sure was that people who were needed assistance could work, could work full-time, could keep families together, to keep income coming, keeping people off welfare rolls. This was all the most important things to this board. In addition to that, not only does, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't even understand this discussion. The center should be a vital part of your economic worries. They not only bring people and employ people themselves, but they keep 47 families employed. That not, that, I mean, in the state of Connecticut, we need those families to stay employed. I do some work up in Hartford at times. The, so I, it, when Susan told me that there was a possibility that the center was going to be separated in a sense from the town, I was shocked. I, I don't understand how and why you wouldn't want to support these families. Support your town. To me, it makes New Milford different. It makes you special, and it keeps families in town and keeps your incomes and the state incomes. It's vital. In addition to that, because of the quality, you're also, in a sense, saving money because you have a whole bunch of kids going from a quality preschool into the public schools, which if you look at all the studies, are going to prevent kids, and they're going to help kids and have them actually be ready for kindergarten. So, and then you lessen special ed, all kinds of wonderful things. So to me, this is a mystery, and if somebody would like to explain why you would want to do this separation, I'd appreciate an understanding because when I started at the center, I was there over about 20 years. I came to the town, I mean, Linda's talking, it was actually me who she interacted with at first instead of Susan. But at any rate, we, we were always, every year I'd come before the Town Council, and we were welcomed with open arms. They couldn't be prouder or more excited to support the center because of the wonderful work that we did. So if you have any questions about history from the 90s to when Susan took over, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Mr. Belair, we'll be giving an update later on, on the issue. Lori Putnam.
I'm Lori Putnam. I live at 5 Hilltop View Road in New Milford. My daughter, Jennifer Burns, is a teacher at the Children's Center, has been a teacher for five years. for five years. She could not be here tonight, so she asked me to read two notes that she and her fellow nursery school teachers received at the end of this school year. It is with heartfelt gratitude that I write this at a very bittersweet milestone point in Silas's life. In two years, in your expert and nurturing care, a nervous, shy little boy has blossomed. As an educator myself, I have watched with admiration as you provided age-appropriate lessons seasoned with love and life's interactions. He loves school and has learned so much beyond paper and pencil activities. He has made friends, learned manners in a setting other than home, and has learned to respect and trust other adult authority figures. Most of all, Silas is comfortable and knows that he's special and has a voice. This is bittersweet because Silas is so content and secure in his little learning cocoon, but must move on. He doesn't understand this part, but I know that you have provided him with the confidence and skills to enter a larger learning experience. He speaks of all of you and his classmates very fondly, and it is sad that his time at the Children's Center is coming to an end. I look forward to Ari's time with you. As you know, he's already raring to go. Thank you for all that you do for children each day. You teach and give with heart and soul. This note was addressed to all three of the nursery school teachers. This note was addressed to my daughter. Happy summer. It's scary to think about how fast these two years have gone by. We just want to thank you for being such an important part of Silas's life. He's gone from being the boy who was terrified about heading to school to being the boy who can't wait to go back. That's thanks to you. Whenever something exciting, interesting, or big happened, Silas wanted to know when he'd be able to go back to school to tell you all about it. He adores you. You made him feel comfortable and confident. We couldn't have asked for more in his preschool years. You'll always be extremely special to us. We hope Ari is just as lucky to call you his teacher when it's his turn. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Kim Oshman. I live at 690 Kent Road in Gaylordsville. Um, I'm a New Milford resident. I grew up here. I attended the Children's Center back in the 70s. I was one of the first classes that Barbara Hamlin, um, under the direction of Barbara Hamlin, Susan's mom. I moved back to New Milford three years ago with my two boys. I have a 17-year-old son and a three-year...and had a three-year-old son, Sam. And I needed childcare, a safe, reliable childcare. Um, I was working a lot of low-paying jobs and I couldn't pay a lot of money. Um, all it took was one phone call to Susan and I had one less thing to worry about. I want to read a letter that my son wrote, Thomas. He's 17. He's very smart. He's a...an honor student. He's president of the German Honor Society, president of the debate team, and a much better activist and writer than I am. And he wrote this letter. He can't be here tonight. Um, he said, "Dear Mayor Gombach, my name is Thomas Lieber and I'm a high school student attending New Milford High School. I'm 17 years old and I have a brother, Sam, who's six. My family, consisting of my mother, Sam, and I, moved to New Milford three years ago and when Sam was three. Since moving here, he has gone to the Children's Center for daycare and preschool. Today, Sam attends the Children's Center after school and during the summer. In our first year of living here in New Milford, my mother, single at the time, fluctuated between joblessness and then small number of low-paying jobs and was only barely able to provide for our family. We received help from a number of charitable people and organizations around town, but one of the most helpful was the Children's Center. My mother, being very open with me about our situation, informed me that payment to the Children's Center scaled based upon income. My family's income being low, payment for Sam's daycare and preschool was minimal. The ability of the Children's Center to provide my little brother with daycare at a low rate was the only thing allowing my mother to go to work and be able to pay for rent and groceries. Not only was preschool helpful in terms of money, but they truly made us feel like family. My brother, Sam, began to make wonderful friends and my mother formed a relationship with a number of the teachers. The education Sam received was phenomenal. He was beginning to read and write and understand basic mathematics. He still goes there and recently brought home a very good report card. I credit the Children's Center with advancing his education. This is just an excerpt of my family's story from the last three years. My main reason for relaying it to you is because I believe the Children's Center is a place deserving of much praise and thanks. I cannot describe with words how helpful the people working there have been. Today, I found out through a family friend that you're planning on cutting the employees of the Children's Center off the town's health insurance. You should not be surprised that I was shocked and disheartened to hear the news. After health insurance provided by the town is cut out, the Children's Center will only have three options: force employees to buy their own, provide healthcare for the teachers, or shut down. Knowing one of the teachers from the Children's Center, I can tell...I can with absolute confidence tell you that these are not wealthy people. Therefore, without a pay increase, I believe these employees would not be able to afford good healthcare on their own. Raising wages would lead to raising payment costs for the Children's Center. Were this to happen, it's possible that parents like my mother would not be able to afford the costs and would have no place for their child to go during the day. The second option, providing healthcare, would also lead to an increase in cost to families. These two options are simply out of the question because they would leave some parents with no place for their child to be cared for where they work to bring home much-needed money. The third and final option is to close down. Again, this leaves children without a place to stay and be cared for during the day. The action of cutting off children...of off teachers at the Children's Center from the town's health insurance will directly lead to children missing out on needed education and care. It will lead to families being stressed further than they are now due to lack of affordable care for their children. I ask you to reconsider your position because these are families like mine that need the Children's Center. It's been a blessing to my family and especially to my little brother. And to cut out health insurance from employees would mean cutting out care and education for a number of New Milford's children. I truly hope you think about this issue, that this is the utmost importance to my family and other low-income families in the area. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Thomas Lieber. Thank you.
Michael Barnes, 17, Sullivan Farm. Uh, I feel a little out of place this evening because my comment is clerical in nature. I was reading...I was reading last meeting's minutes and my comments were very long in that...in that meeting, but they weren't accurately recorded and there were things that were attributed to me that I did not say. So, I'd appreciate it if they'd be corrected. Uh, I understand an audio is available. If someone needs a hard copy, I'd be happy to provide it because I simply read from a statement. So, thank you.
Well, I just wanted to remind you that the decision to put the Children's Center employees on as members of the town's group in medical insurance program was a decision by the council, essentially, not the mayor. And I think the mayor, um, as I said last time, if you're going to change the policy, uh, you know, you change the policy, maybe have good reasons to do so. Uh, but I think it was your policy decision to add them to your policy, to your group healthcare policy, and it should be your decision to take them off. Second of all, at the last meeting, there was, um, there were several comments made to the effect that having the Children's Center employees as members of your group health insurance program will create a liability issue for the town in New Milford. In other words, if the Children's Center employee, uh, has a car accident taking, you know, kicking up a child or taking a child down the green, that the town is going to get sued, uh, as...as the employer for potential damages in that car accident. I'll tell you, as a lawyer with 43 years of litigation experience, that...that the risk of that is virtually nil. Having somebody on your group healthcare program does not result in civil liability to you for the conduct of the employees, uh, unrelated to healthcare, unrelated to the healthcare needs. It's true, we have several lawyers here, it's true that any lawyer can sue you because it doesn't like the color of your eyes and bring a lawsuit. But the risk to you is so small as to be nonexistent. You have more risk from...maybe, I don't know if you have a defibrillator in the...in the town hall, but you have probably more risk from having the defibrillator here preventing somebody from having a heart attack than you would from having these people on your health insurance program. I also speak, I think, for the cemetery workers. I guess there's a couple of those who, um, who are...have been left out of this dialogue. There's nothing that's been said, or at least that I've said, that's any different for them. The town, at some point, for whatever reason, made a decision to add them to your health insurance program. You know, that is not unusual. Uh, for me, when I...for years, I was on the CBIA health insurance program. In other words, my little office wasn't big enough to have a group, so I joined a bigger group. So, we were able to get insurance and I was able to provide for my employees at a...at a better rate than I would have been able to provide it if I was just paying for it myself because it was basically individual coverage and, uh, maybe if they were all 22 years old, it wouldn't have been so bad, but they weren't quite that young. So, I think it's a decision, a policy decision. I don't think the decision has harmed the town in any way, shape, or form. And if it's cost some money, I think it was worth it and I think you should keep them on. And, um, I, you know, I don't have any connection to the Children's Center anymore. I used to be a member of the board, years and years ago, probably in the 90s. But at this point, my only connection to them is that once a year, they put the arm on me for a donation. And I, uh, and I...and because of...and because of my experience with them, my knowledge of them, my knowledge of the town's support for them, I'm willing to support them. You know, if the town says, and I'm not saying you're going to say this, you're going to maybe say it for insurance, but I don't think you'll say it overall, or maybe you'll make it up with a bigger donation or a bigger contribution. But, you know, if the town doesn't support them, why should I? I work hard for my money. There's other charities that are equally deserving. You know, so...so it's a...it's a two-edged sword for you, for the mayor, for the, uh, Human Resources Director. But, don't get blinded by the idea that because they're on your policy, healthcare policy, that that's a liability issue for the town. That is so remote as to be nonexistent. I think council will agree with that. Uh, we've been on cases where the towns have been sued for...for virtually nothing. We're on one now. But, you know, in the normal world, that's not the case. Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kimberly Lepegna. I live at 9 Quail Ridge Road in Gaylordsville. My daughter recently graduated from the pre-K program at the Children's Center. I'm going to be very brief. I feel as far as any change made within the Children's Center is going to have a negative effect, not only to the children, but to the families and the community. Uh, I ask that you reconsider the employee insurance issue. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Donna Dennison. I live at 100 Boardman Road in New Milford, Connecticut. Um, and I just wanted to talk to you this afternoon. Um, my husband and I are both, um, combat veterans and after my husband's third tour on a combat deployment, we decided that it was time for him to get out. I was already out and moved to Connecticut. Um, after looking at several daycares, we determined we couldn't afford to move here because the cost of childcare was just astronomical. We found the Children's Center and they had a waiting list at the...at a time. And when they found out we were combat veterans, both disabled veterans, they helped us out and got us in. With the sliding fee scale, we were able to move here and my husband and I are both full-time students and were able to now support our family and our daughters getting a quality education. She's still there in the BASH K program. We...when we first moved here, our home that we had moved in, that was all set up and ready to go, ended up having black mold and we all got very sick. Um, we had to move out. We have two pit bulls. I don't know if any of you have ever tried to get a hotel room with two pit bulls. It is not easy. Um, the Children's Center stepped in, got us a room that we were in for actually a month. Um, my children started to get sick and getting stomachaches because of the eating the fast food and eating out and not getting home-cooked meals. Again, the Children's Center stepped in and made us home-cooked meals and sent home meals with my daughter so that my kids were no longer getting sick. Um, we found a place to live. In the process of moving, they kept our kids. If we were late a couple times, it wasn't a big deal. They did everything in their power to support our family and to show their support for combat wounded veterans who have come to a new community with no family. We're...I'm from Colorado. My husband's from Texas. Um, we came here on a fluke, on a whim, and because of the Children's Center, our commitment and our dedication to this community has grown more than it ever has in any community. They introduced us to the Village Center for the Arts, which me, my husband, and my children all volunteer at. We volunteer at the school. We have now become integral parts of this community and have truly grown in this community and none of it would have happened without the VCA. That's my story. As you guys can tell, obviously, this is a place that is loved. You have a standing room, only packed house here because this place matters. And I beg you, please, consider every option you can and look at the entire picture before making a judgment because if anybody deserves your consideration, it's definitely the Children's Center. Thank you.
Susan, I bumped you to the bottom because you signed up twice.
Okay. I have a little demonstration.
Five minutes, Susan.
I got five minutes. I got more. All right. Anybody that wants to be in the business of childcare has to be registered and licensed with the Department of Public Health. These are the statutes we have to live up to. However, to get the grant that we got, the 325,000 that's coming in, the millions that have come in year after year, we have to be nationally accredited. These are the standards for relationships, curriculum, the teaching standards, assessment standards, health standards, what the teacher requirements and credentials are, the community relationship standards, the physical environment standards, oh, my favorite, leadership and management standards, and there's more. Can I stop? To get this grant is no easy challenge, no easy task. It is really hard to do. And when I think about what this town has done, where's my quote, "over the last 45 years," it's not the Children's Center that's done it. It's us, the Town Council, and we have done it. What have we done? The most important thing, I think, is that we have created a school that represents the community. Our school does not segregate the low income. Half of our people pay full, half are on sliding fee. Our people does not denigrate the poor and isolate them away. This is truly the community at work. This is the working parents that come and pay their tuition, whatever the amount is, and go back to work and pay their taxes. So, I can't find my quotes, but I don't think I should take any more time. I just think that the issue isn't about money because I don't believe the numbers. I've looked at the numbers. I don't think we have the numbers right. I don't believe it's a legal issue whatsoever, and Terry can speak to that later because Cigna tells me the town defines eligibility, not Cigna. So, I don't believe it's legal. I don't believe it's financial. Policy, maybe. There could be some issues about policy, but we've been with the school, I've been with the town for years and maybe it's been a policy that's been successful. Do we want to rock that boat now? I don't know. I don't think it would close us out and I do not believe that there is another insurance out...option out there. If we go on the health exchange, you're putting us back to where we were before in 1990 when we couldn't afford childcare insur...insurance or the insurance for the school because everybody knows what's going on in that healthcare exchange. You have no control over the premium rates. They spike up like crazy. Someone was telling me their rates went up 38% last year on their private plan and he's actually in a CBIA plan. So, the issue is, how do we maintain the stability that this school has had for the community for 45 years? The program has worked. I do not believe there's a liability. I do not believe there's a risk and I do not believe there's a cost, but I sure would like to know for sure. I think it's great that we're looking at it really deeply. I'd like to understand it completely. I'm glad we have the chance to look at this and really figure it out as to whether it's right and should continue or not. I believe it's right and should continue, and I thank you for your help. It's been a great 45 years.
Thank you.
Some of the comments that I recorded for are not accurate. I would like to have more than that for a few minutes, because I did not, I can't find them all right now. Here we go. There were some statements here that I did not make. The first statement within the...
Which page?
I'm looking for them right now. I read them online. I apologize. I'm looking, sir. I'm looking. It was in the ones that I read that were sent to me.
Page three.
I know, I know Michael's on here, but I also have a comment that I apologize. I saw when I, when it was sent to me via email, but there's a statement here that I did not make. Can we just have these, the, can we have the taped?
Hey, Jay.
I made that one for sure. There's another one in here that I did not make. I apologize. I cannot see it from the phone. It was in the, it was in the emailed one. It's not in this one. I think you did. Yeah, you made it. I think one of the statements you made early on, it looks like there's a correction. Yeah, now it's, it's not, not in here. I apologize. I read it online, and I did not review this when I first came in.
Well, we have to identify it.
Right. No, I think, what I think she did was, I think she changed the person who made the statement. Yeah, can we table this?
There was a revision.
Yeah, it looks like there was a revision. I just did not see that.
Okay, fair enough. So we'll table the approval of the minutes. Moving on to item four, to the mayor's comments. And I do have a couple of comments. First of all, I do want to thank Ms. Furlough, for her years of service. You'll see in your packets that she has submitted her resignation as secretary unrelated to Mr. Esposito's changes, I assume. But she's done, you can see that she's pursuing a career in nursing, and the timing commitment, which I'm well aware of, is significant. So we thank her for her service, and we'll be interviewing and talking to other, you know, reporting secretaries from other boards, and we'll get somebody in here to try to fill your shoes. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I made a suggestion, too, that the council through the mayor's office sign a letter of appreciation, 20 years.
Absolutely. You're here, Mr. Mayor. Absolutely.
I'll sleep in here next to me, Jay.
We'll get you, we'll take care of it.
Yeah, I'm going to the summer.
You're still going to fleece me for...
Your last week for school, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I will address some of the people that spoke in the crowd and some of the issues that were raised, and Mr. Valero will be making an update later on. But generally speaking, I do want to emphasize, number one, that there's no judgment, there's no value determination made on the Children's Center or what they do. There's no doubt that they're valuable to the community and what we're doing here. And I think there's a misconception, although we've been communicating with Ms. Johnson, that what we're proposing is a, is a solution. It's not something that we're looking to put the Children's Center out of business on. We do support them with $78,500 in a check every year. That's taxpayer money that does go to support them. And the scale is not going to be affected. The scale that is offered to children, the sliding scale, is not affected. You're going to hear Mr. Valero speak later on. They pay $170,000 a year in health insurance now to the town. We want to pay, let them pay that to their own provider and have control over it. And for that amount, they will get health insurance for their teachers, for their employees. That's what we're proposing. And the reason why we're proposing it is because there are some very finite and definite legal issues. We signed a contract with Cigna, and regardless of what Ms. Johnson has said, Mr. Valero's had numerous conversations, and that contract limits our insurance to employees. Simple. There's no judgment call. There's no gray area there. There's no doubt that the Children's Center is certainly worthy, but I guarantee you that I could have something offered up here and Meals on Wheels would come up and say, you know, our organization is funded through the town, and it's so important because we feed people, senior citizens that can't get out of their homes, some so emaciated that without our Meals on Wheels program, these people would probably die, and we're a lifeline to them. And that would be an amazing story, but we don't provide them with health insurance either. The same could go for Visiting Nurses Association. We funnel grant money through the town to visiting nurses, and they could get up here and say how we go into people's homes, and after these catastrophic accidents, we help them get better. We help them get back on their feet. And there's no doubt that that would be worthy of our support, but we don't, because it's not a value judgment that we're discussing here. The same would go for the HeadStar program that supports and provides not only daycare but nutritional services for low-income families here in New Milford. They do an amazing job. We don't provide them with health insurance, although they receive funding through the state and through the town. Our volunteer fire departments, they're volunteers. We don't provide health insurance to the men and women that rush into fires while our houses are burning, although we could make a value judgment that they should receive that. But this isn't about value judgments. It's not about what they do. It's about our contracts, and it's about the law. Volunteer ambulance and Village Center for the Arts, the same arguments. So we have Mr. Valero. He will be making an update to show what the effects of what we're proposing will be on the Children's Center, and they are effectively zero. For that $170,000, you will get your own health insurance plan, and this is different from 1990, and a reasonable plan. And that's what this conversation is about. We're not putting them out of business. We're not cutting our support. They're still going to receive that $78,500 every year, and they're still going to receive that $325,000 or $350,000 from the state every year. But this is a true partnership with them that frankly, we just can't look the other way when these issues are raised, and they are important legal issues. So that's, that's my comment on that. Mr. Valero will go into much more detail, but generally speaking, that's what will be discussed, and that's our philosophy with regard to this, not to punish anybody or to cut anybody, but to find a reasonable solution that conforms with the law, the contracts that we sign, and good policy. So that's what it boils down to. That's, those are my comments on that. Item five on the agenda are appointments and reappointments to boards and commissioners.
Move the appointment to the Economic Development Commission, David O. Elmar, affiliated for 7/11/2016 to 6/30/2018.
Second. Up second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, Karen.
And move the appointment to the Commission on Aging, Patricia E. Hammer, Republican, 7/11/2016 to 11/30/2017.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And move the appointment of Andrew B. Grossman, Democrat, to the Historic Properties Commission, 7/11/2016 to 11/30/2018.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Bass.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? There are issues with obtaining a quorum. Seems like a better date for everybody, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item seven, Nicholas Tobin and Associates, A Taste of New Milford.
Okay. Move the closure of the Southern Crossover Street on the town green, September 7, 2016, from 3:00 p.m. until 7:30 p.m. for the Taste of New Milford.
Second. Okay. We do have, we do have discussion, Mr. Kilburg. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Jeff Kilburg, Nicholas Tobin, home address is 12 Spruce Lane, New Milford. First of all, it's great to have a crowd, so I get to talk to everybody about A Taste of New Milford, which will be September 7. That's a Wednesday from 5:00 to 7:30. We're looking to close the Southern Crossover Street and where we're going to have tents and activities connecting the Middle Green with the Southern Green, where there'll be a band and other activities. We have about 30 to 35 restaurants hopefully this year, and there'll be breweries and vineyards at 19 Main Street.
Excellent. That's a, that's a great expansion.
There's a 12 o'clock. It says here at 3 o'clock.
Oh, we're, oh, yeah, we're looking to close the, sorry, the crossover street at 3 o'clock to set up.
Shut off.
Yeah.
Okay. 3:00, 7:30. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Kilburg.
Wait, that's it?
Yeah.
First, your bubble.
Thank you. Item eight on the agenda, Commission on the Arts.
Okay. Move that the closure begin at noon and continue through the completion of the concert. This is for the 2016 Edwin Kincaid Concerts on the Green and Artist Walk 2016.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Kilburg.
Wait, that's it?
Yeah.
First, your bubble.
Thank you. Item eight on the agenda, Commission on the Arts.
Okay. Move that the closure begin at noon and continue through the completion of the concert. This is for the 2016 Edwin Kincaid Concerts on the Green and Artist Walk 2016.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Kilburg.
Wait, that's it?
Yeah.
First, your bubble.
Thank you. Item eight on the agenda, Commission on the Arts.
Okay. Move that the closure begin at noon and continue through the completion of the concert. This is for the 2016 Edwin Kincaid Concerts on the Green and Artist Walk 2016.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Kilburg.
Wait, that's it?
Yeah.
First, your bubble.
Thank you. Item eight on the agenda, Commission on the Arts.
Okay. Move that the closure begin at noon and continue through the completion of the concert. This is for the 2016 Edwin Kincaid Concerts on the Green and Artist Walk 2016.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Kilburg.
Wait, that's it?
Yeah.
First, your bubble.
Thank you. Item eight on the agenda, Commission on the Arts.
Okay. Move that the closure begin at noon and continue through the completion of the concert. This is for the 2016 Edwin Kincaid Concerts on the Green and Artist Walk 2016.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And move the appointment to the Planning Commission, Joseph W. Giridoo, Republican, 7/11/2016 to 11/30/2017. And Gerald J. Monahan, Democrat, alternate, 7/11/2017 to 11/30/2017.
Second. Any discussion? Yes?
Should Monahan's term say 7/11/2016?
It should. Thank you for that scribbler's error.
It's okay, Jerry Lynn. Got to cover.
Thank you.
I know it means this.
With that modification, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And move the appointment of the New Milford Agroherd Protection Agency, Joseph W. Giridoo, Republican, 7/11/2016 to 11/30/2017. And Gerald J. Monahan, Democrat, alternate, 7/11/2016 to 11/30/2017.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And move the appointment of Andrew B. Grossman, Democrat, to the Historic Properties Commission, 7/11/2016 to 11/30/2020.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And move the appointment of Andrew B. Grossman, Democrat, to the Historic Properties Commission, 7/11/2016 to 11/30/2020.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. Moving on to item six is the Town Council item, and this is regarding a change of date from the new, from the Town Council date of August 8, 2016 to August 22, 2016. How many, two motion? Thank you, Mr. Bass.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? There are issues with obtaining a quorum. Seems like a better date for everybody, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item seven, Nicholas Tobin and Associates, A Taste of New Milford.
Okay. Move the closure of the Southern Crossover Street on the town green, September 7, 2016, from 3:00 p.m. until 7:30 p.m. for the Taste of New Milford.
Second. Okay. We do have, we do have discussion, Mr. Kilburg. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Jeff Kilburg, Nicholas Tobin, home address is 12 Spruce Lane, New Milford. First of all, it's great to have a crowd, so I get to talk to everybody about A Taste of New Milford, which will be September 7. That's a Wednesday from 5:00 to 7:30. We're looking to close the Southern Crossover Street and where we're going to have tents and activities connecting the Middle Green with the Southern Green, where there'll be a band and other activities. We have about 30 to 35 restaurants hopefully this year, and there'll be breweries and vineyards at 19 Main Street.
Excellent. That's a, that's a great expansion.
There's a 12 o'clock. It says here at 3 o'clock.
Oh, we're, oh, yeah, we're looking to close the, sorry, the crossover street at 3 o'clock to set up.
Shut off.
Yeah.
Okay. 3:00, 7:30. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Kilburg.
Wait, that's it?
Yeah.
First, your bubble.
Thank you. Item eight on the agenda, Commission on the Arts.
Okay. Move that the closure begin at noon and continue through the completion of the concert. This is for the 2016 Edwin Kincaid Concerts on the Green and Artist Walk 2016.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item nine on the agenda is our update by personal director, Mr. Valero. I'll invite him up.
Good evening. How's everybody? Okay. So, been a couple of weeks between, so I listened to everything that the council had
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And move the appointment of the New Milford Aqua Park Protection Agency, Joseph W. Giridhau, Republican, seven eleven twenty sixteen to eleven thirty twenty seventeen. And Gerald J. Monahan, Democrat, alternate, seven eleven twenty sixteen to eleven thirty twenty seventeen.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And move the appointment of Andrew B. Grossman, Democrat, to the Historic Properties Commission, seven eleven twenty sixteen to eleven thirty twenty twenty.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on to item six is the town council item. And this is regarding a change of date from the new, from the town council date of August eighth two thousand sixteen to August twenty second two thousand sixteen. How did you hear motion?
Thank you, Mr. Bass.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? There are issues with obtaining a quorum. Seems like a better date for everybody, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item seven, Nicholas Tobin and Associates, A Taste of New Milford.
Okay, move the closure of the Southern Crossover Street on the town, green, September seventh twenty sixteen from three P M until seven thirty P M for the Taste of the Milford.
Second. Okay, we do have this, we do have discussion, Mr. Kilburg, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Jeff Kilburg, Nicholas Tobin, home address is twelve Spruce Lane, New Milford. First of all, it's great to have a crowd, so I get to talk to everybody about A Taste of New Milford, which will be September seventh, that's a Wednesday, from five to seven thirty. We're looking to close the Southern Crossover Street and where we're gonna have tents and activities connecting the middle green with the southern green where there'll be a band and other activities. We have about thirty to thirty-five restaurants hopefully this year, and there'll be breweries and vineyards at Nineteen Main Street.
Excellent. That's a, that's a great expansion.
There's a twelve o'clock, it says here at three o'clock.
Oh, we're, oh, yeah, we're looking to close the, sorry, the crossover street at three o'clock to set up.
Shut up.
Yeah.
Okay. Three o'clock, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Kilburg.
Wait, that's it?
Yeah.
First your bubble.
Thank you. Item eight on the agenda, Commission on the Arts.
Okay, move that the closure begin at noon and continue through the completion of the concert. This is for the twenty sixteen Edwin Kincaid Concerts on the Green and Artist Walk twenty sixteen.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item nine on the agenda is our update by personal director, Mr. Loro, invite him up.
Good evening. How's everybody? Okay, so, been a couple of weeks between, um, so, I listened to everything that the council had to say, you know, two weeks ago, and Tom, you know, you wanted to put the ball on my court, I've been.
Greg, can you just speak up, please?
Of course, sorry, um, so I have been in touch with both Cigna, um, Mary Jean, I was also in touch with Karma. I wasn't able to get Karma here tonight, but, um, we do have Terry Demati here to go over what some of the plans will be. I've got a bunch of information for you that I just want to share sort of quickly. First thing that I want to share with you is just a letter from Lori Craig from Cigna that just defines who our insurance is designed for. And then a letter from Jim Papiachi, who handles the relationship between the town and New Milford and Karma. And then lastly, just the general, you know, terms and conditions of liability from Karma directly, so you can see where the type. But what I came here tonight to do, I don't want to focus on eligibility, I don't want to focus on, you know, what we're doing to remove the children's center, but rather, Tom, you wanted to hear about what solutions we had, so I put a lot of work into finding good solutions. So I would just want to talk to you about those, and I'm gonna give you each package for what those solutions are. And there's, there's a number, you know, I've actually identified plans that are very, very similar to the plan that they're on today at a little bit of a lesser cost. Of course. That's from Karma. So in the thicker package where I want to kind of put our attention to are the different plans. I'll start with this platinum plan that is on top. The platinum plan is very similar to the plan that the children's center has today in terms of coverage. There is not an exact plan, this plan is actually offered through Anthem and not from Cigna, but you'll see it has been designed exactly for who's on the children's center insurance today, so the quote is actual for what their, their situation is today, and it's accurate as of today's date. So if you flip to the third page, you're gonna see that there's two different plans that they could select. The Anthem Platinum Standard Pathway X P P O, that's at a cost of eighteen thousand sixty-one dollars and seventy-two cents per month, which is actually four hundred dollars cheaper than what their plan through the town costs today. So with this plan, I'll have Terry Demati come up and explain kind of the differences between the plans, but it's very, very similar, it's not a high deductible self savings plan. There's also a, a plan that's offered through United Healthcare that in my opinion it's an additional thousand dollars. I wouldn't recommend it, but it is an option that's available to them. Not being an employee of the children's center, I really don't have any say as to what they're gonna sign up for, but I just want to show there are plenty of options for health insurance out there today that from a cost perspective will be affordable to them, that can provide very good health insurance. The second package that I want to draw your attention to is the gold package. This gold package, first page actually shows it's got the employees that are enrolled in the plan. This actually gets closer to what they've been paying to the town. They've been on a seventy-thirty split, which I've done a ton of research, I don't know how it ever got to a seventy-thirty split back in nineteen ninety when they were brought onto the plan. They were brought onto the plan to be employee plus one or employee only, no families, and they were supposed to be paying one hundred percent of the cost to the town. So at that seventy percent, there's a big difference there. But that being said, this plan, the Anthem Gold Pathway HMO Plus at fifteen thousand two thirty-seven oh nine is only ninety dollars more expensive than what they were paying with their contribution of the seventy percent last year. So that would be the full cost of what the plan is and becomes a very, very viable with a good health insurance plan to them.
Ninety dollars?
Please. For, per month. Per month. There are four or three other, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, of, of course.
Can you say that it's, I realize it's only ninety dollars more, but is there no change to coverage at all?
There's always going to be change, anytime you change a health insurance plan, there's change to coverage.
It's ninety dollars more, but not necessarily more in coverage.
I'll have, I'll have Terry come up and describe the, what the actual differences are, because what you'll actually see, there could be deductibles that would actually change. You might see prescriptions plans that could actually change or what the out-of-pocket expenses could be. Okay, so with this, the most similar plan to what they actually have today would be at a cost of sixteen thousand six ninety-nine thirty, and that's the total cost of what the plan would be.
Similar in terms of what they're receiving?
Similar in terms of what they're receiving.
Coverage.
From, from coverage perspective, correct. And then lastly is the silver. So as you go down in your tiers, your coverage amounts don't necessarily go down, but the cost out of pocket will end up going up. I've identified one plan in here that I think could financially make sense for the children's center, but again, not being an employee, I, it's hard for me to say what makes sense and what doesn't, because I'm not working directly with the leadership or with the employees. But I've identified the Anthem Silver Standard Pathway P P O, which is at a cost of thirteen thousand eight seventy-four twenty-eight per month to cover all their employees. This plan is not a high deductible save, health savings plan. It does have a high deductible only if there are, is someone who is hospitalized or has an ambulatory surgical center expense. It is otherwise on a copayment similar to what they have today. The copayments are slightly higher, but they are not catastrophic by any sense. So at this point, I'd like to, to invite Terry up and have her just describe the differences between the plans.
Mr. Bellaro, one thing before you invite her up, what do our teachers get right now?
So our teachers today are on a high deductible health savings plan that the town actually will contribute to. Their plan has a two thousand dollar deductible for individuals or four thousand dollar deductible for families. So our teachers that are with the town today must pay if they have a family coverage. It's gonna be four thousand dollars out of pocket before any of their insurance actually kicks in.
Mr. Bass?
Single is two thousand.
Do you know how much those teachers make compared to these teachers that at most make seventeen dollars and sixty cents per hour?
It varies, well, I don't know offhand, L M would be able to.
The other question was, there's a discrepancy in your numbers. You'd said the first plan, which was eighteen thousand sixty-one dollars, was four hundred cheaper per month than what the total cost is of the plan right now, which means if there's a seventy-thirty split, they're paying somewhere around high twelve thousand?
They're actually paying thirteen thousand, and I can get you the exact number. I wasn't speaking, I was talking about the total cost of the plan, not what they're paying. That was the difference, the total cost of their plan is eighteen thousand, I wanna say it's four, and I have to get the actual number. It's eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty ninety-three, that's what their plan costs today.
And they pay seventy percent?
They pay seventy percent, so they're actually paying, through June, they paid thirteen thousand four sixty-one sixty-six last month.
Well, seventy percent, that'd be twelve thousand sixty.
Of the eighteen four sixty, I would have to run through the numbers, these are the numbers I got from our finance department.
Yeah, it would be, so it's lower than what they pay.
Okay.
So I'd like to know.
Well, Barbara Hamlin also has a supplemental health insurance that is actually being compensated in, in this plan as well.
Okay, so can we get a, can we get these discrepancies figured out?
Of course.
And then you had said that the fifteen thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollar plan is only ninety dollars more a month. You just said they pay somewhere around thirty-seven.
No, last year when they had families on the plan, there were several families that fell off, they were actually paying fifteen thousand two eleven twenty-eight.
Okay. Or they pay this year?
This year, they're paying thirteen thousand four sixty-one sixty-six, right?
So it would actually be eighteen hundred dollars more per month than what they're currently paying?
If they went for that particular plan, if they went for the Anthem Silver Plan, they'd be paying less.
Which provides less coverage than what they're paying?
Not less coverage, it's gonna be.
Higher deductible.
Higher deductible, it would be more out of pocket.
And Mr. Bellaro, just to, to that, to that point, I just did some calculations, seventeen dollars fifty cents an hour is about thirty-six thousand four hundred a year, and I believe that's consistent with, um, I mean, if you say seventeen fifty an hour, forty hours a week, times fifty-two weeks, so that's consistent with what our teachers are making, but. Our teachers aren't making that?
Thirty dollars an hour.
I, I have to look at.
Our teachers don't make thirty-six thousand dollars a year?
I don't handle the teachers, I don't know what their salaries are.
Are starting teachers?
Yeah, significantly more.
Yeah. Okay, we'll, we'll get that, but that's all right, but just as a way of comparison. So those are the numbers that we're talking about. Uh, Mr. Bellaro, anything else you want to bring up, but I said Mr. Matty's here?
Yeah, so I do want to bring Terry up, and Terry's gonna be able to talk about different plans that are out there, what the costs are, what the differences are between the plans, but again, she's not a small, you know, a small company broker, she's the town broker, but she should be able to at least relay some information based on what's available on the exchange today, and also if there's anything else out there available.
So I'm Terry Demati, I'm from Siegel Consulting, and we've been the consultant, well, I've been with Siegel since two thousand five, so I've been with the town since then for eleven years. What we do is we help you with your budgets, we help you with labor negotiations, we do budget updates, we set the rates for you because you are self-funded, and, um, you know, we try to help you save money for healthcare while still providing a quality plan. If you want me to, uh, do you want me to go through these eleven plans or whatever they are and just tell you what the differences are? I mean, I can tell you that now, the plan that the children's center is on is the, the town plan. It's a fifteen dollar office visit copay. It's a, I believe, a two dollar generic drug, seven dollars brand, and nothing for mail. It is, I don't think there's anything to go to the hospital, there is an E R copay on it, there's no inpatient copay on it. It's a, it's a very rich plan that can't be found anymore. So, you know, as Greg said, I'm not a small group broker, but I will tell you that they can't find, you wouldn't be able to find this plan in the open market. Yeah, sure.
I don't want to go into details on that. But the silver P P O, which Greg pointed out.
Yes.
Was fairly close.
Yes.
Not a little less.
Uh-huh.
What would you say the biggest difference in coverage would be from their perspective?
From, from their perspective, the biggest difference in coverage would be that for certain services, you'd have to satisfy a deductible first before the services are covered.
Like the two dollar, oh, the deductible?
Deductible.
Like the two thousand, four thousand?
Right, and, and the silver case, I believe it's thirty-four hundred?
Yeah, sixty-eight.
Thirty-four individuals, sixty-eight family, but again, that's for the more serious issues, that's for hospitalization, outpatient surgery, et cetera.
But you have to meet that.
You'd have to meet that before you got coverage for those big-ticket items, right?
Apply for prescriptions as well?
No, it does not apply for prescriptions or doctor's office visits, specialist visits, or preventive care. Those things are direct access and just take a copay with the plan that Greg was talking about.
So yearly visits and.
Those are covered with the copay.
New things.
Right. Remember under the A C A, for everybody, no matter what kind of plan you're on, I don't mean to give an insurance lesson here, but since we're here, um, preventive care is covered in full, there's no copay. So as long as your doctor codes your visit as routine preventive care, there is no copay in network.
Mr. Bass?
Thank you, ma'am. Just a, a, a quick question, the town itself over the last five years, what has been the average yearly increase of their, of self-insure, of the cost?
Yeah, it's been, it's been up and down, you've had some really good years, um, and you've had some bad years. So, I mean, in the best years, it was a two or three percent increase, one year it was flat because the board made some changes. Um, I believe this year, your rates increased significantly.
The reason for the.
It's experience. It's experience, it's claims.
But we're also using the heft of the number of employees in the plan to.
Yes.
To negotiate the best price that you want.
Well, I mean, the pricing, the only pricing that we need to negotiate is fixed fees, so stop-loss fees and administrative fees, otherwise the claims are the claims, because you're self-funded, you're paid claims.
So when we migrate off of a municipal plan, so to speak, and go to a private plan, the heft for someone seeking insurance would be different?
Right. Yes. So what else can I tell you, I mean, these plans range, again, from platinum to bronze, there are Anthem and there are United Healthcare, um, Healthy Connecticut is going out of business, so don't go there, but again, I, the, the research I did was on the Connecticut Exchange. As I said, I'm not a small group broker, but these plans are comparable, if you, you went to the carriers for small group plans, it would say, these can be offered, these are offered on the, uh, on the exchange.
Mr. Barry, another question?
Yeah, make, make it very simple.
Sure.
Any of these plans is as good as what they are getting now?
No. That's impossible to find.
Does the fluctuation up or down in the town's number of covered people, employees, um, does that affect the pricing?
If the membership changed significantly, then the pricing for the fixed cost would change. There are certain thresholds, certain tables with insurance.
Will taking eleven people off affect the town's rates?
No.
And will they be able with only eleven people to take advantage of what we see here on these pages?
Yes.
Yes, just a question.
So, just so it's clear, because it's the last thing we, it wasn't, who defines eligibility?
The town.
On health insurance plan?
The town.
Okay. So can a non-employee of the town be on their health insurance plan?
It's po, it's town policy, yes.
How many people are on our plan currently, about?
Um, I think it's about eight hundred employees, between seven and eight hundred, between the town and the board.
And we have a catastrophic policy, right, hundred and twenty, up to.
You have a stop-loss policy, a hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Individual stop-loss, yes.
Okay. Earlier, uh, the woman from the children's center said that, say there was a one where we went up to that stop, the hundred and fifty thousand dollar claim, she'd said that in, in determining the rates, that would be kind of thrown out, so to speak, is that true?
Yeah, when we, when we set the budget or the healthcare company sets the claims, we set the budget, right? Because we, we see the claims. So any catastrophic claims over stop-loss, we take out because they're covered by the carrier, um, and that's how we set the budget, you know, really, really high, I mean, a hundred and fifty thousand is really not a lot right now.
Yeah. And then, just so I better understand, with the policy of eight hundred people being self-insured versus going on one of these plans, which, any of those plans, do you think they're subject to higher rate hikes over time than by having the, the power of being under, or?
You know, it, it's a, it's a, it's, yeah, it's a crystal ball thing only because it's a different animal. It's the, it's the, the exchange, it's the State of Connecticut exchange. So last year there was a big increase, you know, some carriers pulled out, they were gonna, so I don't know, it depends on if it levels off, and, hm? I'm here, I, I don't, I don't, I know it did, I know it did increase, but it's a whole other animal and I can't. Sure.
Mr. Bellaro, let me just ask you a question, so you said we have eight hundred employees that are insured by the town, they're not all insured with this platinum plan though, right, they have varying levels of insurance?
Yes, right.
All right.
They're all, um, you know, negotiated through labor agreements.
Because we have unions?
Yes.
Is there a trend that you're seeing from the town in terms of the insurance that we're offering our employees?
From the, for the town?
Yeah.
For the town and.
I mean, for the, the union, uh, you know, contracts.
Yeah, some have high deductible health plans with the health savings account that the Board of Ed contributes to. Um, some have a similar plan to the silver plan, but the deductible is much lower, and others just have a straight copay plan.
So it varies?
Yeah, the teachers, you know, the, the majority of employees, because the board is much, you know, much larger, so the majority of employees do have a high deductible health plan with the health savings account, to which the board contributes to the account.
Right, okay. And you said the stop-loss, so that, that kicks in after the town, so if there's a catastrophic injury, the town pays a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right?
Correct, yep.
And then the insurance company kicks in.
An illness, yes.
Okay, and then the next year, if there's a, if there, if there continues to be a loss or a high expense, we're still gonna pay another hundred and fifty thousand?
Correct.
And then, you know, the insurance company will kick in.
Right.
Huh? And in terms of rate hikes, the, the town is subject to, not necessarily rate hikes as well, but differences in, in what our, um.
So the ra, so the rate hikes from the carrier, because in this case, they're really just acting as your T P A, your third-party administrator, so the rate hikes from them, the admin fees are, are easy, we make sure that they don't charge anything more than four percent a year. The increases are at most four percent a year, you know. Um, stop-loss is based on experience, and it's based on their book of business experience too. So it's all a function of experience, but those are the things that we're negotiating.
Could you, since we canceled the part of this data, do you have the data where you could provide for the last ten years what the contributions were for these employees and what the claims were?
No, that's in, what the contributions were is an internal thing, it's what the town charges them, I have no idea.
So that we could find out internally in our staff, but it seems we have a problem with the claims side?
With the claims, so the claims for the children's center.
For the last ten years?
Well, as far back as I can go, I can do that for you if you.
That would be great.
Yeah, I would love to see that. Well, how far back can you go, because I know we've only been able to go back four years.
Yeah, I have to see, I don't know what I have, ten years is a long time, so I.
Well, Mr. Bellaro, you can speak to that, I mean, I know you've been trying to get that.
I was able to go back four years, I haven't been able to get any, when we changed to Cigna in two thousand eleven, I've been able to get from July twelfth, two thousand twelve until the first.
Yeah, I, I can see what I have, I may have some in-stuff.
And maybe that's a good chance for you to kind of address some of the claims that there's a discrepancy, the numbers are off, which Johnson would say with your numbers that you've been presenting, how confident are you with your numbers?
I'm very confident, the numbers that I've gotten have come directly from Cigna, they come from that script, I, the numbers that I've gotten regarding what the claims have come in are fully accurate, and the numbers of what we've actually paid, I can already, you know, buy the check from two thousand and twelve, what has come in, and I can categorically tell you that the town has lost over two hundred and eighty thousand dollars since the last quarter. It's not small.
What was that number?
It's not small.
No, it's.
Two hundred, two hundred and eighty thousand. Since two thousand, four years.
But I think the woman just said they have a four-year grant of three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars per year that comes to the town with just one point two million in four years.
No, no, that doesn't. But I think that just goes directly to the children's.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, to provide services to the town, which in essence provides services to the town in New Milford, albeit through a different organization. And just so everyone's aware, in two thousand fourteen, when the teacher's contract was approved with the Board of Ed, it was fifty thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars for a starting teacher with a master's degree, which would probably, which would probably be a reason why their health insurance plan may not be as great.
And without a master's degree, Mr. Mansky?
No, that's with a master's degree.
No, I said, and without, because we don't require a master's.
Well, I was just doing a direct comparison to the children's center, which said they paid a little.
It doesn't require a master's degree either, so.
They stated on the record tonight, as well as at the last meeting.
One at a time, guys, I know, it took care of that conversation just one at a time, so.
I have the floor.
Mr. Pearl, up.
At the last meeting and this meeting, they had mentioned that they had two teachers with master's degrees who were the high-stake employees who were making slightly over seventeen dollars per hour.
Now, my question to you, sir, is how much do we pay in a starting teacher in our system with a basic bachelor's degree?
I, I, instead of providing an apples-to-oranges comparison, I'm providing an apples-to-apples comparison.
It isn't an apples-to-apples comparison, because you don't need a master's to be at the children's center, although some have them, you don't need a master's to be in our system, although some people have them.
And my understanding is that the children's center, those who don't have master's degrees are making class months? I don't understand.
Well, we don't know, that, that is another thing too, you know, they're not employees, and I'll be clear at this.
I'm sure they'll give the information.
We don't hire anybody at the children's center, we don't fire them, we don't, I mean, I'm sure they're all very well qualified, but we don't have the kind of control that you would expect over an employee like we do say a teacher or a teamster or a police officer, so that's the rub as well, um, uh, yes, Mr..
Can I ask about this obsession with the control over the people who fit the children's centers? I mean, we've got twenty six.
That's how you define an employee, because they're.
Well, according to the other town attorney at the last meeting, he said if we create an ordinance, which this body can do, we can let these folks stay on this plan. I mean, we, we said, yeah, this is two meetings, we spent hours upon hours, we stretched out half the town over what, sixty, seventy thousand dollars in a hundred-million-dollar budget? I'm sorry, this is, I understand we're trying to find, that uncover the goal that was in the last administration and all the deception that has been thrown around.
You're getting out of line.
On this tape for since November.
You're getting out of line, Mr. Fazito.
I can be out of line as long as I need to be. All I'm saying is we've spent a lot of time over about sixty or seventy thousand dollars at about almost a hundred-million-dollar budget to help the people in this town, whether they're pulling the full boat or the people that can't afford so they can go to work and pay taxes, pay their car taxes, pay their town taxes, and put money into their pockets and feed their kids. You guys are Democrats and you guys are putting this stuff on, you're Democrats! You're Democrats! We're talking K K's, everybody!
The soapbox is outside, this is a town council meeting.
Seems to work.
This is a town council meeting.
And the soapbox you guys are on about seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Show a little decorum!
And control and control.
Show a little respect.
Over the children's center is outrageous.
You're outrageous, you're out of the line.
Yes, thank you.
You asked the question, right? Why, why are we talking about control? We're talking about, ladies and gentlemen, employees, that's all it is.
An ordinance is all it would take according to Randy DeBella.
Not true.
One ordinance.
You cannot legislate against the facts. You can't legislate against.
An employee person either is an employee or they are not. There's no legislative, there's no legislative decree or anything about that, you are, or you aren't, there's no gray line. And if they're not, everybody admits that they're not, so that's why we talk about, we don't have any control over them. That's what you consider an employee, if you hire them, if you fire them, that's the definition, if you saw the Department of Labor, Workers' Comp, or anybody else to define who's an employee, and it's black and white, there's no shades of gray.
Not if you talk to Cigna.
Mr. Bellaro, you talked to Cigna.
I did.
What did they say?
So, Cigna actually says that this letter is to confirm that the town in New Milford benefits are designed for full-time town employees.
So you have to certify who's an employee.
We have.
Mr. Johnson, please, sit down, you had your chance. We have all those folks coming out at the next meeting, we bring Cigna in, Karma in, everybody that we should be here tonight, everybody. Before we throw out all these families. Before we throw out all these families and absolutely disrupt an honorable organization that's helped the town for 26 years, with the help of the town and another 10 or 15 before that, I think I'd like to have everybody in the room before we cut their legs off.
Cut their legs off? We're giving them an alternative, like, then they paid the same amount they're paying now.
On exchange and acceleration.
Ladies and gentlemen, we gotta have a conversation here. At the point of the town council meeting, have an agenda item so we can discuss this. Public comment was your opportunity to do a discuss this and address us. That's the way the system works, you may not like it. I want to address you guys when you're speaking of public comment, but I hold my tongue so that we have this discussion with the council. I gotta ask you to do the same thing, just as a matter of respect.
Please honor the mayor's wishes here, please, please. This is not a service.
Thank you.
I'm supportive of you here.
Alright, but please, let us have the discussion so we can get this out there fully, so that the public understands what's going on here. This shouldn't be a backroom deal, or a wink and a nod, or because somebody was on the board of directors back in 1990. This is taxpayer funds. Whether you agree with it or not, there are implications to considering people employees that everybody admits or not. Mr. Blair, did you have something to say? I'm sorry, I cut you off, and then we should pass.
So, I'm, I agree with everything that you're saying. For me, this is not a political issue, this is very, very black and white. I look at our town policy of having full-time town employees on our health benefits plan, and that's the policy that I'm administering. So that, it's very, very black and white for me.
Mr. Bass?
Thank you, ma'am. Greg, first of all, thank you for doing your time, and you've presented some of these plans. Same with you coming. I know we asked for you to bring us solutions, and you brought us some solutions. Another solution is, as we talked about before, we all agree these are not town employees. But we also, one of the solutions that can face this council, as we've talked about before, is the ability to change the employee handbook. If this administrative body so chose to change the employee handbook, then these particular individuals could stay on the policy, correct?
I guess, you have to answer that question, we've discussed that as well.
So, it, it's a self-insured plan. If we change the employee handbook and we actually redefine what an employee is, it becomes a very slippery slope.
Sorry, sir.
Can it be done? Yes, it, it potentially can, but it comes at a much larger risk.
Right, I'm, I'm not saying change the employee handbook to add the children's center as employees of the town. There may be verbiage that town attorney could talk about, I'm not an attorney, that could be crafted in such a way that these bodies, whether it be the cemetery or the children's center, could be added on. I think that's a conversation that we're talking about, all of these solutions. I think we need, that's one of many solutions. One of the things, myself, just as, as one vote, this is a lot of information that we've gotten tonight. I know when I'm making the, the, the health, the health plans with my family, my wife and my kids, it takes a, a time, once we get all the information as to what's gonna benefit us. One of the things while we're doing this, I know in the last meeting we talked about, is as we're continuing to explore these opportunities, the children's center still is on the same plan as it's always been, right? Status quo.
That is correct. They are on the same plan through October 1 of 2016. That's correct.
They're still on the same town plan, everything else, and we're still working through making these...
Identifying solutions, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Can I answer any more health benefit questions for you?
Maybe. The, all the talk about Kirma saying this and that, and Greg, I just want to say that we have documents here, ones from Tribe Point Insurance, which I guess is the Kirma rep. And he does not say only an employee. He said that in his opinion, we should not pay salaries or benefits to anybody who's not a town employee. I'm not in a lawyer, ba-da-ba-do. Okay, again, he's saying you might muddy the waters. He doesn't say that they have to be an employee. Also, Cigna, Lori Craig, said that she's confirming that the benefits of the town are designed for full-time employees, and the town in Milford decides and declares to Cigna who is eligible. So obviously, our history shows that we have considered them to be eligible. So, that's two points. The other one is, this came from Kirma, you said, the liability, general terms and conditions. I don't know what came before or after in, in whatever document, but under A2, you're insured as shown, as named insured in the declarations, okay, regarding the individual cover sections regarding who is insured. Could we get a copy of what this is referring to? Because as a standalone piece of paper, it really doesn't...
It's, it's the entire Kirma deck, the declarations.
Well, you don't need to give us all a copy of it, but you know, maybe send it to us in an email. I prefer that than more trees going down. I, I still think that there's a bit of a parallel discussion going on here, because the mayor has a point, and he says, really, no one's saying that they, they don't want what they've offered us all these years. There is a cost factor, and there is a point that is perceived to be a liability factor. However, there's also a little bit of a parallel in saying that, well, these are things you found, and thank you for that. If I was Susan, I'd be really happy you did this, and Terry explaining it to us. However, it does change something for a business, a nonprofit, that lives on every dime. And so, I think that when you say there's a slight increase or the deductible will go up, I don't know what their coverage, I mean, I don't know what their liabilities are, what they put in for, but something that changes as much as a few percent could be the difference between them being able to offer what they offer to all the families, the 47 families. So I, I think rather than arguing and, and getting, you know, riled up over this again for another meeting, I would like if you, as in control of this, you work with Terry or whomever, show us, when you show us things like this, silver plan, which I agree, looks great, okay? But in order for us to really understand it, or for anybody that's listening to understand, we need to see what does it change for them? Because that's, that's the crux of why we're here. Nobody would have been here these last two meetings if it wasn't for the fact that there's going to be a change that could potentially put them out of business. So with that in mind, not trying to make more work for you or for the mayor, but I think to make it a salient discussion, which I hope it remains, we need to see that. And when you, and you did give me the figures, as, you know, when I asked independently, but it would be nice if we could see. This is what 50% of their people do now, every year. This is what would happen then. Insurance goes up for everybody, but something along those lines, if you could. Because these are people obfuscating, using, I feel, you might, it's possible. I think we all know that employee is determined by the town. The town wants to use their definition, a new definition, that's one discussion. But the other discussion, which is at the heart of all of this, is what happens to Susan. The rest of us could talk about employees, not employees, all day long, all these people don't have to sit here for it. But I, I really would like to see you just put it in a comparison that we all can understand. And can we do that? And then we all start screaming?
You're saying like, like you did now, but have current platinum, gold, silver, side by side?
If silver PPO is what you deem to be the best overall, looking at all those people, and you certainly know more about it than I do. But then show us what you see, I can see what they pay. Show us what you know of what they do, and then maybe let Susan look at it, and she can tell you what's true.
So a benefit comparison, saying right now the offer is a copay of $15 versus the silver, which would be...
Right, and we do understand that their plan is a Cadillac plan, and people are very lucky to have those nowadays, we know they're going away. But there are some other points to having our overall coverage from the government. So if you could just work it out, so it's easier to look at. This is a lot of paper and a lot of work, and I really do appreciate that.
Of course.
But I think you know what the bottom line is, and that's what I think we all should want to see. Am I, am I misspeaking what we all might like to see?
I really, I mean, to be honest with you, sitting here feels like I'm sitting in a jury box. I've got one person telling me something on, on a complete opposite spectrum. I have another person telling me something on, on, you know, it couldn't be any farther apart.
Right.
And I'm supposed to sit here and decide what's the best for all of these people? And at some point, someone's not gonna like me so much. So I want the honest truth, the honest facts. I think the two of you should sit down and, and discuss it. So when you come back, we don't have to sit through three hours and get absolutely nothing accomplished. Because, I mean, this, this might be one of the most frustrating experiences in my young 28-years-old.
Greg, I want to thank you for all of your, this is, this is really not your job. We're doing this for the children's center, which is not an agency, but you've come to the plate, and I think you've done a committed job.
Thank you.
I have another issue that I would ask the town attorney, John, if you would reflect. The enabling legislation was in 1990. And the terms of the legislation were that the, that the children's center would pay 100%, and there would be no family income.
It's important for me to respond to that. The key is that, in 1990, all that happened was the town council voted in a resolution. And as Randy and I have talked at length about, and as he reflected the last time, that was not an action that bound the town. It was not a legislative act. Rather, all it was, was a decision of a resolution. By resolution, it wasn't in the form of an ordinance, and it wasn't binding on the town. It was, there's no associated contract, it's a, it's a recitation of what the town council wanted to do. It's, we don't view it as any, any form of legal undertaking that's binding on our town. Rather, what's important is the decision at hand is one, well, there's, there's two, two real decisions. One is, there's been a decision, I believe, by the chief executive officer of the town, working with just the mayor, working with his personnel director. There's a couple of ordinances that give the personnel director his, presently it's his responsibilities. Those responsibilities include overseeing, implementing, and administering personnel directives and benefits of the town, across the town, for personnel purposes. So I believe he's been acting with the chief executive officer and making the decision, which was articulated in the letter to the children's center, which basically gave them a three-month window of warning that the town is no longer going to abide by. And that was an executive determination that they were not employees under the Cigna plan. Now, there's a second decision that I think that's, that presents the force, which is the possibility of a legislative act of the town council. And I believe the town council could do this in possibly as many as three different ways. One would be, I, well, let me just say first, we do not think it's advisable to try to amend the personnel code, because the personnel code itself is a body of, of rules that apply only to municipal employees. That's gonna be very difficult. So the first way, I would say quickly, is an ordinance. Second way, less, less advisable, it would only be a one-year stop gap, would be, in your discretion, a supplemental appropriation that would cover the shortfall that would be facing the children's center if they were pulled out from the health insurance plan. You understand that you are appropriating $78,500, but you are effectively giving them a form of, of subsidy by allowing their employees to be eligible on that Cigna plan, which the executive branch has determined is not going to be viable in the absence of, let's say, an act. The third, I don't think is advisable at all, would be, if, if you found some type of public emergency to exist, which I don't think exists, you'd have to find a threat immediately to lives, health, or property of persons. I don't really think that applies, but you can, there is a charter provision that allows you to adopt an emergency ordinance, but I think the, the proper way would be a Section 406 ordinance, which would have to require a public meeting. You'd have to have a public hearing, I'm sorry, a public hearing, not a public meeting. A public hearing on that ordinance. It would have to be written very carefully to exclude the exact concerns that the personnel director and the mayor have about, you know, making sure that this ordinance is not used as evidence to establish an employer, employee relationship, or other kinds of liability exposures to the town. So I've said enough, I hope that's clear.
Thank you.
That's a very wonderful explanation to the question I didn't ask. That's okay, I'll ask you again.
You did say that there was legislation, there wasn't a legislative...
Well, the action that the town council took, it was to allow the children's center to go on our policy, that they would pay 100%, and there would be no families. My question to you, I think it was, I think there was some language at one point of employee plus one?
Plus one, right. Which I think it had a place in the house or...
My question is, that if we resolve this, knowing that that was what the intent of the council was in 1990, what do we do about the fact that they're paying 70%? There's nothing in the record that, that allowed them to, to reduce it from 100% to 70% or have families. But, but knowing that that was the original intent of the council, do we have to go back to what they said in 1990?
You're legislative action now, you're not bound by what the town council did in the resolution. There's no binding contract that was formed in 1990 between the, the children's center and the town, how are we...
So what did it, what, what did it accomplish?
It, it basically articulated, we think, it was a, a policy that was articulated a resolution, that was then filed and deferred to by the chief executive officer for, I believe, 26 years.
Understand why Jeff was concerned.
Here's what I'm gonna suggest, in light of the options, so that we give Greg and myself some guidance as, as to where we're going with this. I, I would entertain a motion, if there is support for passing an ordinance that redefines an employee to include the children's center and employees for purposes of health insurance, then that's a motion that should be made now, and if it doesn't carry, then, you know, we could address offering these different plans that are comparable in terms of price. But that's where I think we're at.
I'd like to see a comparison before we make a definitive decision here.
I mean, you could discuss that in a...
That we can get it side by side in the near future, I mean, we have till October.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Bass?
Thank you, mayor, I'll make that motion. If I have a second, I mean, I'll speak, I'll speak to the motion. I think that by doing the motion, it can help the process. It can help everybody know that we're moving forward. It gives Greg an opportune time, such as yourself, and all parties involved, an opportunity to craft the legislation if this body speaks, to move forward or not move forward. So I think this is a very proactive thing to do. And I would, you know, I don't know what date that you'd like to set for it. I mean, maybe you can bring it back to the next meeting, when you'd want us to put that on the agenda? Because I know you guys need to do that.
Well, I'm opposing the motion, so I'm hoping there won't be a date. But to speak towards that, I will go on the record and say that I don't believe, and I respect Attorney Tower, your opinion, but I don't believe that you could legislate against facts. And in this case, we do have very specific facts, they're not the ones that we assumed in the past, they're not the ones that we like. But the fact is that there is a, a legal definition of what an employee is. It's, there's a ton of case law and regulations from the Department of Labor on down regarding that. And I think playing around with these legal definitions to include a subset of the community is dangerous, especially since we've offered a reasonable alternative that basically maintains the status quo financially and, you know, reflects what the town is moving towards as a policy, even on its own health insurance policies for its employees. So, Mr. Barr, did you have anything?
Yeah, I, I have a problem with that, with that motion. I heard first that, looking for a comparison, I had, I had asked the question, is this policy gonna be comparable, obviously? If what has been presented, the gold, the platinum, the silver, is not comparable? It's gonna be a change for these people, even though it may cost them less money? But now you're talking about family, you're talking about a deductible, you're talking about copays. I would rather go back as directed for that comparison before I take a look or, or vote on, on a motion such as that. It's a conundrum that we have right before us. Your point is well taken, your attorney's point is well taken. I am uncomfortable with the motion.
I, I would echo Councilman Barr's position. Not that I'm not open to the, the concept of what's on the floor here, because I am. I just don't think we have enough specificity as to what we would be doing. So in that regard, I, I'm in agree with, agreement with my colleague, and...
Just, go, Mr. Bass, after me, and then... So what it, it sounds like I'm saying is that there is no overwhelming support for the ordinance, but there's not necessarily, not looking to make a decision on the... to make a decision on the alternative plans as well until you get more information.
That's a fair statement.
Just as a point of order, did we suspend the rules to add this motion to the agenda?
No, we did not.
So, the motion's improper to begin with?
Okay. Which sounds like it might be, you know, appropriate anyway.
I just have one question for Attorney Tower to clarify. Can we create an ordinance that would provide health insurance to the Children's Center and to the Town Cemetery, wherein they would not be designated as employees? They would be required to provide their own workman's comp and be required to provide their own liability insurance. So, that the concerns that we have, which was, one, all these other agencies coming out would be avoided. Two was a workman's comp concern. Three was a liability concern. Four was the employee concern. All of those issues would be addressed. Could such an ordinance be crafted?
And could I add one part to the gentleman's question? And would there be any due process issues for other potentially eligible agencies, such as the VNA or Meals on Wheels and so forth?
Well, it's our opinion that you, we could craft such an ordinance. It would take very careful scrutiny. And it would be based to address, as the gentleman's concerned, it would be addressed in a fashion that would be narrowly tailored to the full-time employees of, let's say, in this case, it would be the Children's Center of New Wilford, Inc., or alternatively, New Wilford Center Cemetery Association. Those are the two entities you're talking about. And it would be based upon a finding that they perform functions that are deemed by the town to be important services for the municipality itself. And we have to keep an eye on our provision, our statutes that allow, that give certain powers to municipalities, but we think that such an ordinance could be crafted. It would also have to be meshed with the present third-party administered self-insured plan, the Cigna plan, which I agree with His Honor, the mayor, that right now, that plan is written to address only employees. But such an ordinance, we think, could be blended with that.
So, the way that it's written can be crafted in such a way that, say, Meals on Wheels or whatever other organizations were paying, would then have to request a new ordinance, so to speak, or a modification to the ordinance?
Yeah. And I don't think that, it's not like such an ordinance would give any nonprofit standing to, you know, to participate. It would name those two nonprofits and limit to those.
Mr. Barr?
I hear, I wear what Councilman Smith asked, is saying, in a sense, we're talking about something that's 26 years old, so should be grandfathered.
Yeah.
And let's move on.
Yeah.
It got something that's been in effect now for 26 years old. I am not sure at the full knowledge of the taxpayer, but it's been in existence for 26 years.
I hear you, Mr. Barr.
Okay.
For me, right and wrong is whether it's one day, one year, or 26 years. And if you're going to address it, you do it right. You do it by an ordinance. But continuing to do this in the way that it's been done for the 26 years is just flat-out wrong, not because of anything that the Children's Center did, but because of the way the town's been handling this. And it's not looking back, as Mr. Esposito said, prior administrations. These are Democrats, these were Republicans. It's not political. It's simply improper. It's bad bookkeeping. We should be able to look towards something to say exactly why something exists the way it is and what the authority is for it, so that it's not subject to discretion. And if you pass an ordinance to do that, then that will be binding on subsequent administrations. But there is a process. Mr. and Mrs. Muggles?
My concern about passing an ordinance like this, that's just going to include the Children's Center and the cemetery, is that the other organizations in town that possibly would be eligible for this could possibly consider it discrimination, that they're not going to be considered in the ordinance. And then I think, if we're going to open it up to one, we have to open it up to everybody or to none, basically. It's going to be.
That's fair enough discussion. And that has been, you know, one of the concerns about the slippery slope that this kind of does.
I share that concern, but my other concern comes in, and I'm going to be sitting at this very table tomorrow with AFSMI and with our unions. We are offering our other employees and employees of the town health benefits that do not compare to the plan that the Children's Center is on. And it's a major concern when the union is asking me, oh, why can a non-town employee have this insurance plan? And I can't.
That's a tough, very good point. The thing about grandfathering, we, those of us in any town who've lived long enough to see times change, many things are grandfathered in. The lack of sidewalks, needing sidewalks, lack of height of buildings, lack of tall towers, cell towers, solar panels, you name it. Where can a gas station be? Where can it be? And we all know that, particularly in rural areas and smaller towns, that it does happen. That, something that's been there forever. It's like eminent domain or right of, you know, using something. So, we have two things, which encompasses now 13 people, both of which the loss would impact the town. Cemetery would be a rather expensive impact because we'd have to replace those two people if they take the hike. So, I understand that grandfather is not a legal necessarily.
It actually is. In zoning situations, it is.
Well, I was in the planning. So, I think that it's not, I think it's something to think about when we talk about this, because we're not talking, Mary Jane's point is well taken. But I think that we're talking about entities that have been around, really, a long time, long enough to be truly grandfathered, and that, as our town attorney just said, is could, we could craft an ordinance that would exclude anybody but these two entities. And I just think personally, that's what we should consider and look into it. I'm not saying that's the way it's got to be, but I think we have to consider it.
Let me say something towards that. So, grandfather, I understand what you're saying. When a gas station is grandfathered in, and the zoning regulations are changed after it, it's grandfathered. This isn't a grandfather situation. Number one, it's money that, this is taxpayer funds. And number two, this gets renewed every single year. So, for 26 years, we have added, every year at the end of, you know, the end of the fiscal year, we re-add them. And when we sign a new contract with our health insurance company, we are affirmatively adding them again. When they hire a new employee, we are, Greg's got to certify and send something to the insurance company that says, here's a new employee that's going to be added to our plan. So, it's not like it was done one and done back in 1990. This is constant. And that's why it's not static. It requires daylight to kind of address how we got here and why, and to discuss whether this is the way that we want to conduct the government business in the future, or is there a reasonable alternative in the form of these private health insurance plans? And that's the discussion that we're having right now. Fair enough.
I might respectfully say, when you bring up the budget and fiscal, that for 26 years, I've not been on the council all those years. However, I know that the last time we decided to take some money away from them, the town absolutely said how they felt about that. And when we discuss our budget and things are taken out, nitpicked, and whatever, I don't, I rarely ever, except just recently, did it ever come up, we should take money away. And no taxpayers ever come to me to say, I really wish we didn't have to give them that money. I mean, I think we're here, us, you know, you're elected, but we're not. We're here because somebody voted us in.
We're elected.
Well, we're elected, but we're not paid, right. We're elected because people want us to do what's right. And a majority of people have said to me and others, I think, that they think this is right. Now, the legality of it and your way of looking at it from the town, which you should do, might be different. I just think that when a taxpayer isn't revolting because we've been giving them this stipend all these years, that's something we have to consider. Just so you, you know, we're not being obstructionist. It's just, I think, that's a consideration we're charged with.
And I think if you go the root of the ordinance, hopefully, you will get, you know, the public participation in the daylight on it to clarify once and for all. You're right. The budget line, $78,500, that's in there. It's identified. And it's got daylight. But I would wager, most people do not realize that the town provides health insurance. And that's an important benefit that, you know, if we can't, I can't open a book and explain, well, how do we get to the 70-30? The finance director just tells me they pay 70-30. My first question is, why? Why not 50-50? You know, why does the cemetery pay 10% and the town pays 90? Why? And that's where this whole thing has come from. Why? And we look back and we look at the resolutions and we say, okay, it was 100% back in 1990, and somewhere along the way, we got away from that. There was no daylight. So, we've got some daylight on the issue now. You hear from the public. Yeah, fair enough. Yeah, Mr. Barr?
This may be simplistic on my part. Those that are now on the program, they are, let them be frozen in place. Any new employee goes by the books, they'll have to opt for one of these new plans, whether it's silver, platinum, gold. Is that another scenario?
That's an option. Anything's an option.
Those that are there, they are frozen. They're there. They're grandfathered. Anybody coming on board has to opt for one of these new plans.
That's a fair consideration, that it sounds like we're going to have.
I think we should see everything. We could see a copy of a draft ordinance, if we could see an option like that. If we could see all of these plans side by side with what we're offering them now and everything else. Maybe we've got to throw everything out there. Let's look at it all. Let's look at it all.
All right. So, we've got our next meeting in August. So, I'm sure Greg will have more information and more updates at that point, too.
We've got one other thing, not good, you guys, but we've got a position.
Yes, we can move on to item B on that on the agenda.
We can advance the meeting by like a week, so we have to redo it to make everything.
It wasn't formalized.
There was no suspension. It was not on the agenda, and there was no.
No motion.
Essentially, I can just.
All right.
It'll be on the next agenda.
Yeah, we'll keep coming back with updates.
That's August 22nd.
All right, item B.
I'll make a motion.
On which one? Item B?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Barr?
I don't think, I don't think he's.
No, he's talking about item B.
Yeah, item B. So, the purchasing specialist.
Let's make a motion first, and then there'll be discussion.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the proposed changes to the purchasing agent job description pursuant to Charter, Section 1202.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Blair, can you just discuss, first of all, how we got here? I know we'll take questions.
Okay. So, you know, we've got a committee that's going to be updating all of our job descriptions, and we're going to be updating the Personnel Code as well. The purchasing clerk actually left in the beginning, well, in the middle of June. So, we've been without a purchasing specialist since June, I think, 15th. So, just in order of getting somebody in place is crucial, the position this is. I've put this job description into the new format that's going to be out. Does everybody have a copy of it? Do you? Okay. So, what I've been able to do, I've been sitting with our finance director, the person that this person will ultimately report into. We've analyzed what the position is today versus what it also needs to be, what the requirements are going to be. So, we've added several different functions, request for proposals, request for quotes, all of the bid process, closing bids, just the overall level of this. So, I've recommended a couple of things for the job description. You'll see, it's in the new format. It's actually more of a paragraph position rather than bullet points. We did increase the grade from grade 12 to grade 13, which the union is appreciative of. The union has looked at this. They have signed off on it. They're fully on boards. What we've also done is we have increased the minimum qualifications. It's gone from three years to five years. We're also requiring a bachelor's degree for the position. From the minimum skills and abilities, we've also increased several things there. Really, fully around the experience that's going to be needed to handle the level of this position. So, does anyone have any specific questions?
Ms. Francis?
I just noted a couple things. I did read this in the paragraph form. I took a little on this. You have under knowledge, skills, and abilities, office equipment, et cetera, up to 20 pounds. And over on your X, you know, never frequently, constantly, you do reference the medium work of 20 to 50 pounds occasionally.
Occasionally.
So, I believe, just to be bookkeepers with this, you should mention that up here in the job description, because it does state only up to 20. The other question I had was under driving, it says never. I was a purchasing manager for several years, and I did have to drive to see people. And I believe our purchasing manager also has to go to a bank.
So, I don't know that Mary ever went to the, did she go to the bank? Yeah, so that I, I only was working with her for a few days. That we can update.
It kind of precludes if you ever needed the person to do it, we kind of hope that you get to work. And I suppose that would have to be driving. I don't know. I just wondered why it was accepted more than anything.
Where does it say that? Where is this?
On the X marks, what you do. Yeah. And I never knew that we had a low and a high temp. What is the difference, Greg? Not talking about Mary Lee, who was here for 28 years, but between the salary we face between a 12 and a 13 grade?
It's about $2 an hour.
I see.
So, and how many dollars did I work out over?
So, Mary was making 57. I've got the actual numbers here.
61 or something like that?
Yeah, takes her just over 60. So, currently, it's 57, 283, 20. The proposed range takes this.
60 something.
Yeah, it's going to be 63, 835, 20. But, you know, one of the reasons for the justification around the costing, is when I look at the other towns and what the purchasing person is actually making, you know, as I look at New London, they're making 68.
It's a very, I just want a question, somebody else can ask. On this list, which is working conditions, I don't know how this plays out as far as our liability or whatever. But one of the things that you have marked here is physical danger, mechanical hazards. Does this in any way put the town in a bad situation if, you know, somebody comes in and holds everybody hostage? Could a simple employee use this type of document to say, I signed on to never have any physical danger? Is that, you guys know better than I do.
As a part of their job description, this is not like it would be for a police officer, where you could actually quote what the physical danger would be.
Okay. So, this is sort of just an over.
It's not a guarantee.
Yeah, this is not, right. This is more along the lines of the ADA for what to be expected.
No, that's fair enough.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Greg, has any, has this job been posted internally yet?
It has not been. It needs town council to report it being posted.
Has anybody asked you about this position?
Yes.
That's been in town, or been in the employee?
Yeah, have employees asked me about the position? Yes, they have.
And what was the reasoning for changing minimum qualifications?
The level of position. What this position has grown to over the last 30 years. I know that it was updated in 2005, but it hasn't been updated in 11 years since then. And just the level of contracts that have been coming in, Mary actually started, I think, some of her highest contracts were in the thousands, not even tens of thousands of dollars. And now they're in the millions of dollars. So, needing an experienced person in this is critical.
And my last question is, does this requirement, does the person need to be bonded?
I don't believe that they're required to be bonded, but I have to check on that. I don't, you know.
You're not dealing with funds?
Well, they'll be dealing with funds, because they're going to be handling collections. Yeah, they're going to be processing the purchases.
So, would that be, would that be something that you would want to recommend or have you thought about?
That didn't even come across my mind, to be honest.
And I'll be honest, Greg, I mean, everybody in the finance department deals with funds. So, I mean, the only bonding requirement, I believe, is the tax collector.
Is the tax collector. I don't even know if he is bonded to.
I think so. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
So, do we have the last job description actually approved by the town council from 2005?
It's the first page.
It's the first page.
I've got copy here for you.
Oh, that's just this.
Yeah.
Oh, because that said 2015 version, but that's also what was last approved by the council in 2005?
That wasn't approved, yeah, that wasn't approved. It was just 2005 that was actually approved.
So, now, if someone has a four-year degree, they can apply for the job over one-year experience, basically?
Correct, with a degree.
And you feel that's sufficient?
If they've got a degree and they've got experience in the deal, I feel as though that they would have the expertise to be able to come in and learn the job. I think otherwise, five years of experience is really going to be what's necessary to learn this position. They'll have supervision from the finance director, so they're not going to be left out when you're going to try.
And the original job description had a background check and a credit check. That's no longer in there?
Every town employee.
I think we do that anyway.
We do that for everyone.
Yeah, it's not part of the job description.
Yes, and it doesn't have to be on the job description.
With one of the last employees that was hired, that wasn't in the court. So just to clarify, a background check?
We redo a background check and a credit check for every new hire.
Any further discussion? So there was a change, Katie, that you had mentioned. Would that be incorporated? We can't issue with incorporating that?
Either remove the X over or put it in the words, only because you just never know. As you know, you're in the HR business. You might ask me to pick up that typewriter and I'm gonna say, uh-uh.
That's fair enough. And in moving the driving X over as well?
To occasional rather than-
So yeah, the X for driving will go from no to occasional, right? Okay, and what was the other one?
The 50 to 100 pounds is, in the description, it says only 20 pounds. It says 20 to 50, and in the description, it just states 20. So either take, move the X on the chart or add 50 in here into the paragraph.
Medium or 20 to 50.
Right.
It's not inconsistent, actually.
In your opinion, Greg, I mean, if, because this was reviewed by the union also in terms of lifting weights. I don't think anybody expects 50 pounds.
What has more?
I don't really keep thinking of 20.
The job description will carry more weight. This document is more to cover us from an ADA perspective, setting what the expectations around what the job reasonably would expect. An occasional driver.
No, I guess if you're saying we don't really need to change the poundage, if this isn't the determining document when I go to file suit.
Not the job.
So no changes to the poundage.
Okay, so just moving the driving to occasion. Okay, with that change, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor.
All right, thank you, Greg.
Have a wonderful couple of weeks. Enjoy the summer. We'll see you on the 22nd, unless anybody wants to-
And hopefully, you know, the subcommittees will be coordinating with Greg going forward also. And we're gonna get to it a little bit later, but if he's gonna leave the personnel code, the job descriptions, Greg will start coordinating, I guess, with the subcommittees to get those underway.
That's all right, good. I'll shoot out emails and we'll go with that.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Item 10 on the agenda is Public Works.
I'll make a motion to authorize David R. Gronbeck to sign, enter, and enter into a contract with Motorola Systems for all radio system maintenance, support, and communications.
This is the radio equipment, maintain our emergency radio equipment. And we do have it with Motorola already. It's a continuation. So any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Samansky.
What account was this budgeted?
Public Works has this budgeted in their accounts. I don't have the exact designation, but it was identified previously. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 11, Household Waste Collection Day.
Make a motion to authorize David R. Gronbeck to sign and enter into a contract with MXI Environmental Services LLC for the purposes of running the hazardous waste collection day on September 17, 2016, from 8:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. with the John Pettibone property.
This is something that we do every year through HRA and Suzanne Veth on Holt, who is our representative, is coordinating this. The only change in prior years is that, you know, we do have the Pettibone property available where I believe it was previously held. There have been concerns about the logistics of having it at the train station parking lot. So this is considered an improvement and everybody involved is very excited to use the property again. It provides better logistics for the determining and everything else. So any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Item 12 on the agenda, 12A. We had discussed this. We didn't get to it last Town Council meeting. This is the creation of a subaccounts within the Capital Reserve Fund. You'll see 12A is a resolution that does address the protocol that we initially discussed when we brought this up to the Town Council. I'd like to turn a motion.
Okay, move the creation of a subaccount within the Town's Capital Reserve Fund to be funded by unexpanded surplus funds for Public Works, Police Department, Parks and Rec, Recreation, as may be available at the end of each fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
So this is to adopt the resolution or pack items 12A, not that, not what was just discussed, just to be clear? So we're adopting the resolution as ordered?
Right, yeah, 12A.
So what's the definition of healthy for the fund balance?
You know, I guess that's subject to interpretation. You know, it depends on what our auditors tell us. From a financial point of view, what the bond companies look at. And that's, I guess, a moving target that depends on, you know, the Town Council at the time. It's a hard term to define, but it's something that, when we were discussing the resolution itself, they wanted that to be a consideration, our surplus accounts. We wanted to take that into consideration before designating any funds for this capital account. So that's why that's in there.
Mr. Barr? Could this resolution be read into a minute since it does give a lot of responsibility to the Town Council in considering transfers of funds?
Sure, it's fair enough if we could read it in. Mr. Chamberlain, do you have any comment?
A question. Is this effectively somewhat a memorialization of what has been the traditional practice of allowing agencies that have surpluses to carry over balances from year to year? I know it has been a practice or something that has happened, but-
No, it's different from what's happened. It's more of a, for lack of a better word, copying what we do for the Board of Ed to encourage efficiency on their end and where they get to benefit from the result of it by funding their capital reserve funds. For as we see now, they've got a chiller that needs to be replaced and they don't have to come back to the Town Council to do that. It's on a smaller scale to do that with regard to these departments as well. Right now, you carry and force individual funds, but it doesn't, it stays within that account that it was previously budgeted. This would actually mirror what happens with, I see Frank, I'll get to you in one second. This mirrors what we do with Board of Ed, where we create a subaccount within the department for capital nonrecurring expenditures. So it would actually move it out of whatever individual line item it's in and create an aggregate kind of fund.
So that's the big change, is the removal of the aggregate title?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Mr. Worgen.
Yeah, just from a history standpoint, the budget goes from year to year. So if you've got money in your line item, let's say you've got $20,000 to replace a furnace, and you only spent $15,000 and you replace the furnace, you have $5,000. You either spend it by transferring it to another account or it goes away. So it happens at the end of the year. There's a flurry of activity to try and find out places where I can spend this money. This allows them to have a pot that the money could go into. They don't have to make rash decisions. They can accumulate money to get towards a meaningful profit. For instance, they could take the money and buy a truck if they really need it. They can't do that now. So this is what that-
But what, the purpose of my question is that on an individual basis, on an agency-to-agency basis, people have, rather than spending out their surpluses at the end of the year, have made requests, a good example being is the cemetery asking that a non-purchased truck allotment be carried from year to year. And I gather that particular truck allotment's been carried along several years. So I guess what I'm asking is, is this basically, does a similar type of thing for these particular agencies? Except that they don't have to go back to us and ask specific permission?
You mean, does it exist right now? I don't know. You know, this is, this, like, and to use Frank's example, you got $20,000 budgeted for something, $15,000 is spent right now. There's no reason or nor incentive to not spend that $5,000 on something else. And a lot of times, it does get spent because there's, there's a, is a kind of idea that if you don't spend what you're budgeted for, you're gonna lose it in the next year's budget. This will reward them for, you know, taking that $5,000 now and saying we have it at the end of the year and putting it in this account. Maybe along with a couple of other $5,000 and you get up to 20. And in a couple of years, you're up to 60, 70, or 80. And you've got a nice chunk of change to, you know, buy something that really does come up in an emergency and will actually save the town money at the end of the day.
You talked about saying stay in force is when you have a budgeted item like, you know, we wanted to pave endemic, but the weather wasn't good and a project such as the renovation is coming up. So they kept that money in force to stay within that account. That's an appropriate in-force, appropriate carryover. As the mayor is saying.
Yeah, that's a really good example.
You're doing a good job of saving money and you take a $20,000 allocation and you can, and you only spend 15, you should, you know, you should go into an accounting-
But there is still some oversight with us. It isn't necessarily a dollar for dollar.
Right, right, right. It's all in our discretion.
Kind of like we do the Board of Ed, but yes, Mr. Francis.
Well, just to say, this isn't, and I get what you're saying here, that this isn't to foster in any department that they shouldn't do the best with their money to put it. I mean, that's why we have the Town Council as an oversight of this, and I don't think it will. I think it'll foster some consideration as an incentive as it's meant.
I think so. You're not gonna, it's not gonna undercut their ability. Nobody's gonna be, you know, cutting back on something just so that they could kind of save this. But throughout the course of a year, you do realize savings and you do realize efficiencies and it's important to reward that. It's the best.
Thank you, Mayor. I do like this idea. It's a good idea. Question for Town Attorney. You've reviewed it. Doesn't impinge on any kind of charter or you have any concerns?
Two quick things, Your Honor. I want to point this out, that on the agenda, the item is limited to the Public Works, Police Department, Parks and Rec on the agenda. But the proposed resolution is being, it is not solely limited. So I wanted, Your Honor, to reconcile. I don't know if I'm inserting, it's gonna be limited to those three agencies to do so.
You know, originally, and I think that's where we are, so originally, the idea was it's mostly Public Works and Police and Parks and Rec. But then as I actually got into writing this, the IT department said, hey, you know, every once in a while, I save some money too and it wouldn't be a bad idea for me to carry it over. So without being, I think that's the intent, is to start with these three departments. And it's very simple administratively for us to set up subaccounts through the Finance Department. But I wrote the resolution so that we can keep it open, so that other agencies could benefit as well if it came up, if it was appropriate.
One more thing, to answer the question fully, in 1995, the Town Council created the Capital Reserve Fund. These monies will be going into that, which is the same fund that the educational and the town side monies go in. Once it goes in there, it can only go out for two different things. One is a capital expenditure or the other is a nonrecurring expenditure. And I just wanted your, so the council to see that it's effectively a lockbox for purpose.
But all into one account?
It's all in one account, except you might remember that the Capital Reserve Fund has got a segregation within it of the Board of Ed and the town side, but now this is gonna be-
These will be additional segregation, so there's gonna be subaccounts.
Subaccount within the-
Public Works, subaccount, Parks and Rec, subaccount, so that, yeah, no, one department is not gonna benefit from the efficiency of another one.
Very fair.
If we do leave this, because it's under the Capital Reserve Fund statute, that your action tonight is gonna be bound binding on Town Councils in the future. This is gonna be, this is gonna be a practice.
So my next, my follow-up question is, the way that it's going to be segregated, council has purview over the surpluses. Can council then move one line item from one body, from one segmented substance to another?
Well, the way you set up the Capital Reserve Fund, you are not able to move the Board of Ed's portion of that to the town side. And it was my understanding that this was going to be set up in a way that if the money's landed from the Police Department earmarked,
Stays with them.
It was not gonna be transferable within it. But it may wanna be, the resolution may wanna address that. I don't think it, I don't think it is as tight as it is.
Question on your earlier point, is that capital and nonrecurring or capital or nonrecurring?
It's capital and nonrecurring.
Thank you. Mayor, another kind of follow-up to what Councilman Samansky had said. Is there a way that you and the Finance Department can kind of give us some kind of guide rails on healthy and other considerations? So then when this does come before us at that time, we're not spending a lot of man-hours on what we think may or may not be something. We kind of have some guidance.
I hear you. I mean, I incorporated that because it was, you know, Ms. Francis, one of your suggestions was to consider, you know, our fund balance. So I mean, maybe it's just with consideration of the fund balance without identifying with the healthy.
Would a percentage?
I don't think so. We don't have those guidelines. We're not locked in right now. Maybe it's just, maybe it's just consideration of the fund balance. I mean, I put healthy in there because that's what we're looking to maintain, but it is amorphous. You know, you could say you're gonna consider the fund balance when you pass a resolution.
I'm just looking forward, because this might have to be grandfathered in, so I was thinking of future counts.
Sure.
Well, I'm thinking that we as a council could be looking at different factors in different circumstance. How healthy is the town? How healthy is the agency? What are we looking up down the road? So I really think we wanna leave ourselves that latitude.
If you want to say with consideration to maintaining the town's fund balance.
I think, I think that there's no way to escape having discussion if and when something comes up.
Sure.
I understand not wanting to, but I don't know that there's a way to get around it. There's nine people here and we all have an opinion.
I think each time, you know, there's a request to do this, there'll be a report from the Finance Department that says, you know, our fund balance is X. You know, I would recommend that's a healthy fund balance, both by, you know, our rating agency and, you know, put them on the hook so that it makes your job easier. You don't have to necessarily do it in back.
And those are my bring up, Mayor, and then the other one is other considerations. I'm just wondering, like, what would another?
That's, I leave it open. I have, you don't know what-
Town emergency?
Right.
And may I just ask, this is probably a legal thing, but do you, is quoting healthy correct in this type of thing? Is sort of a situation?
Well, just because it's not really, it's quoted because it's not a legal term. It's not, it's, it's just a broad kind of descriptive term.
Could you change from healthy to recommended?
Well, it's a maintaining.
She's got the dictionary.
Okay, fair enough. To address your comments earlier, Pete, I mean, it does say, you know, in the paragraph above, which will be a subaccount within the departments for capital nonrecurring expenses. So that was put in there to make sure that it was segregated for the department, not to be moved around. Yes, Mr. Samansky.
Technically, though, shouldn't it be within a subaccount within the Capital Reserve Fund, not by department?
Within the- Okay.
Not by department.
It's gonna be either Capital Reserve Fund by department.
Capital Reserve by in the department.
Which will be subaccount? Will it be a subaccount within the Capital Reserve account?
Right.
So it's gonna just be the three departments that are working for now, Public Works, Police, and-
No, I think the resolution leaves it open to add to that. And I'll come for you to say, you know, I think it's appropriate to add an account for IT or the Health Department has extra money.
All right, do you want me to read this?
But I don't think we need to set up all these accounts if they're never gonna be used.
All right, all right, I'll read. So be it resolved that before the end of the fiscal year, the departments of Public Works, Police Department, and Park and Rec with the Mayor's Office and Finance Department will identify the accounts with surplus funds expected at the end of the fiscal year. Following the audit, a presentation will be made to the Town Council with a request to transfer such surplus funds into an incentive capital account, which will be a subaccount, Capital Reserve account for capital- which we, which will be a subaccount, capital reserve account for capital nonrecurring expenses, or just for nonrecurring expenses? Capital.
Nonrecurring expenses.
Okay. The town council will consider the request to transfer and may transfer all, some, or none of the surplus funds into the incentive capital account. In doing so, the town council will consider the reason for the surplus with an emphasis on encouraging efficiencies within the department. The town council will also consider the status of the town's undesignated surplus fund with consideration to maintaining an adequate fund balance. Other considerations may also be weighed. When the department requests an expenditure to be made from the capital, incentive capital account, the request will be brought to the town council for consideration and approval, and shall be used only for capital or other nonrecurring expenses.
And?
Yes, Mr. Semansky.
We, we just defined that it should say capital and nonrecurring expenses?
I believe that was council's definition.
Yeah, you, you asked a question.
And?
Okay.
And.
And.
All right.
Second, any further discussion?
Can I just make a friendly amendment for that paragraph two? Sound, didn't sound too good. Can we say something like, which will be subaccounts within the capital reserve fund segregated by department?
You're right, the second.
Perfect.
Capital.
Don't, don't say anything else. That was it?
Right.
Within, yes, yes.
Subaccounts within the capital.
Reserve fund.
Segregated by department.
Just, it reads better.
Second paragraph.
Second paragraph, last sentence. Which will be.
Subaccounts.
Subaccount within the capital reserve account. From capital.
Right, so say that again.
Which will be subaccounts within the capital reserve fund segregated by department.
Wait, let her write it. Capital reserve fund.
I can.
Segregated by department.
Segregated by department.
For capital and nonrecurring expenses.
All right.
I would wait a second reading of the entire.
No.
Okay. So with the friendly amendments.
As amended.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, um, item B. We had a presentation at the last town council meeting of the, from the Lanesville Fire Department regarding the, um, proposed expansion at the fire station. It was proposed to set up a subcommittee. I'm proposing a, um, a, a three-member subcommittee made up of town council members. I, I know I hadn't, you know, asked about this, but do we have any volunteers, Mr. Bass? Uh, let's see, Mr. Semansky's volunteer, anybody else? And if we have extras, we'll kind of address that. Mr. Chamberlain, Mr. Wargo. Anyway, anybody. So we've got four, how about we make it a four-person committee then?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Uh, Mr. Bear? I think if we get more than four, we create a quorum. I think four is our limit.
Stick to I.
Yeah. So I think we could do four, and if there's an issue with the vote, I'll break the tie.
I would be more than happy to see my seat to Mr. Bear.
You're on, you're on. Okay.
All right, so you'll make a motion.
Uh, so, motion, please.
Uh, motion to create, um, town council committee for the purpose of reviewing the proposed expansion at the Lanesville Fire Station pursuant to charges section four oh two. And.
Second.
I wanted to go on to appoint the members.
Sure, yeah.
And, um, um, move the appointment of Peter Bass, Frank Wargo, Walter Bear, and Paul, uh, Tom Esposito.
No, Paul.
No, Paul, Paul Shemansky.
Paul.
To the committee.
Okay.
Do you adjourn?
It's usually six months.
Oh, for a term?
Oh, is it a year or six months?
Initially, it can be for as much as a year, and then it can be renewed as much as six months, although, I mean, other committees have done, I would be on that.
Okay.
August first, two thousand and sixteen, through August first, two thousand and seventeen?
Fair enough.
August two.
August first. We voted?
All right.
No, we haven't voted yet.
Oh, you need a second, actually.
Second, okay.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, thank you. And item C, our final agenda, we have, um, we previously created some, um, subcommittees for, and I apologize, this was, this needs to be reversed. Item I is supposed to be the position code where Ms. Francis, Ms. Lundgren were appointed. Item II is the personnel description where Mr. Chamberlain, Ms. Richardson were appointed. We have two open positions if, um, you know, for housekeeping purposes, if anybody's interested in doing it. Otherwise, I'll task the committee with just working with who's, um, been appointed so far. Uh, is there any other additional interest for these two committees? Seeing none? Okay, then we'll task it with just the two that are, that are on there. Mr. Chamberlain, did you have something to add?
I did not.
Okay, I don't know if you were volunteering. Okay, yes, Mr. Bass.
Thank you, Mayor. Before, before we adjourn, Walter, I'm sorry, real quick. When, I apologize.
Huh? You have to act on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I don't think there's anything to act on, because they were not appointing anybody. It was an open kind of item.
They've been all your voting.
Yeah.
When I was watching the, the TV from our last meeting, when we made the, when we made the motion, um, concerning the street school and then doing the appraisal.
We're in the process of getting an appraisal. Um, and by way of update, Kevin is talking to appraisers, and he's getting quotes, and hopefully by the next town council meeting, we'll have an additional update on that.
In, in the motion, we only made a motion to, to, um, approve going, amending.
Suspending the rules.
Yeah.
Suspending the rules and adding. We never made a motion to.
We never made the final vote.
Oh.
We only voted to suspend the rules. We never voted on the motion.
What does it say in the minutes?
What is, what is? It's been done, so.
Go ahead and.
Can we reaffirm? Okay, so we could, we could vote to suspend the rules again to make that motion. I think we'd have to do it again, and then we would actually make the motion to pass the resolution, you know, the authorization.
What motion was to suspend the rules and authorize the mayor to spend up to five thousand dollars for appraisals on fifty East Street property?
Should we tie it all together?
But we never.
I don't think we're allowed to.
We never.
It's make two motions, suspend the rules to add to the agenda.
Right, and then you got to vote.
So what do we do? I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to add an item to the agenda.
I'm second, Mayor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now the motion.
Make, I'll make the motion to authorize the mayor to go out to bid for appraisal for the East Street School. I don't know if you want to put an amount on there. It gives you flexibility.
I know five thousand was authori- was authorized.
It can be, an MIA can be higher than that, though.
Yeah, well, I mean, if it is, you know, come back and, and.
For a special purpose.
Yeah. But I think five thousand is appropriate. So with that amount, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.